Good evening. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm Minneapolis City Council President, and I'm going to call this adjourned meeting of the City Council to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Rike.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
There.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Fry.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon is absent. Kano.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon has entered the room. There are 13 members present.
We have a quorum. All members present. The next item, or first item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The agenda is before us. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have introduction of our boards and commissioners that are here, and I haven't had a chance to look through the audience to see if I see any of our boards and commission members. Oh, Commissioner Wheeler from the Board of Estiment and Taxation, Commissioner Anita Tab from the Board of Estiment and Taxation, and the Board of, in the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. I'm sure there are other people. We have quite a crowd, and so the monitors in the other room are available to be listened to, and I'm sure we'll be joined by other members of our boards. Oh, Commissioner Scott Freeland. Commissioner Scott Freeland from the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. Welcome. This evening's public hearing, which you folks are here for, I'm sure, allows members of the public to comment about the city's proposed 2015 budget and property tax levy. State law requires the city to hold at least one public meeting for citizen input. This is the city's second public hearing, and the first was held on November 18th. The proposed 2015 budget includes the proposed 2015 budget and tax levy, the 2015 consolidated plan for the city's community development block grant, and the proposed water, sewer, and solid waste rates. Before we begin, I'd like to go over our schedule for this evening's proceedings. First, we're going to open the floor to public comments on the proposed budget as submitted by Mayor Hodges, the budget as submitted by Mayor Hodges, and as further refined by the City Council Budget Subcommittee during last week's markup session. We'll take speakers in the order that they are registered. If you wish to address the City Council and haven't already done so, please sign up with the city clerk. The city clerk is here. There are sign-up sheets outside also. Mr. Carl, thank you. Each speaker will be given a speaker number. We'll ask all speakers to be ready to step to the podium, so I'll call two names, and then people follow and be ready to come to the podium. You will have two minutes to speak, to address the council, and if you have materials that you would like to submit to be part of the record, you can give them to Mr. Carl, the city clerk. Once we've heard from all the speakers and concluded the public hearing, the City Council will recess for 15 minutes, and during that time, the Minneapolis Board of Estiment and Taxation will convene in this chamber to conduct its budget meeting. After the Board of Estiment and Taxation has concluded its meeting, the City Council will reconvene in this chamber to take up and consider the city's proposed 2015 budget. At the same time, the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board of Commissioners will be meeting in Room 333, which is just down the hall beyond the mayor's office, so just outside the doors here, down the hall, and they will act on their proposed 2015 budget. These meetings will be running concurrently for those interested in observing them. Finally, there's an overthrow, overflow room, excuse me, across the hall in Room 319 where folks can monitor the proceedings in the room. And if you don't wish to speak tonight but want to listen to the meeting, you can move to 319, just across the hall, so just be on those doors and watch on TV there. I'd like to ask that people allow speakers to speak. We want to be respectful to each person's comments, and so we've done a little technique at some of our other public meetings when we have this many people. If you agree with the speaker, if you go like this, it's quiet, and you can, then we, we know how many people agree with the person that's speaking. So, again, we'll be, we'll be asking each speaker to keep their comments to two minutes and ask that you be respectful of every speaker as they, as they present their remarks. So, thank you, and with that, we're ready to open the public hearing. And may I have a motion from the council here to suspend the rules to allow for the acceptance of public comments?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. So we will proceed to public comments, and I'll begin to, I'll read two names and then call up a second name when the first person has spoken. The first person is Steve Thompson, second person Terry Holkinson. Steve Thompson, followed by Perry, Terry, excuse me, Holkinson. Mr. Thompson, so when you speak, would you please give your name and address first? Thank you.
Hello, members of the council. My name is Steve Thompson. I'm with, I live at 2930 Blaisdell Avenue in Minneapolis, and I'm here in opposition to a portion of your budget that is designated for bike trails in the city. Now, the reason for that is the fact that even as a biker myself, I am cognizant of the fact that, for decades, for as long as there's been license plates on cars and taxes on gasoline, car drivers are the ones who've paid for all these streets. And now the, the whole city is turning lanes over to bike trails, closing off lanes that were once for automobiles but no longer. It's been happening every time I turn a corner. I've run into this situation. Now, the, I believe the city has a law that says bicycles should have license plates on them, and yet nobody's paying any attention to that. I have never seen a bicycle that had a license plate on it. So, the automobile drivers are the ones who are, are and have been paying for all these streets, their construction, their maintenance, for decades, and now they're being ticked in the teeth by losing half of what they've been supporting all these years. Now, I don't mind the idea of there being bike trails, but I hate the process that you're using to establish them. The correct way to do this would be to actually build bike trails on the other side of city sidewalks, which of course would cost a lot of money, but then it should, because you're taking all that money from the car drivers. Riders should be made to buy the license plates that the law says that they're required to have, and they should also be made to pay the same price as we do for car license plates. That is how, you would support that, just as you did with the streets for, and the license prices on cars.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you. Your two minutes are up, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Terry Holkinson, followed by Louis Alamehu. Mr. Holkinson?
My name is Terry Holkinson. I live at 3352 Prospect Terrace in Minneapolis. I am a member of the Board of Minnesota Interfaith, Power, and Light. I call it a faith utility. I'm on the solar team also. Minnesota Interfaith, Power, and Light believes the active care of creation and social justice are inseparable and integral to spiritual life. As an organization, we respond to climate change by bringing Minnesota's faith communities together to join the growing climate justice movement. Our solar team is working with community organizations and communities of faith in North Minneapolis to launch our first community solar garden project. We hope to build some long-lasting bridges with North Minneapolis in the process. Since MNIPL's founding in 2004, we have mobilized religious support for landmark legislation to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Minnesota, educated hundreds of thousands of congregants, and worked with every major religious denomination in the state. As activists of faith, we implore the Minneapolis City Council to act on the fundamental moral principles at the heart of all major faith traditions and fund the racial equity measures as well as the clean energy programming. So very much is at stake. Please remember, our city's Clean Energy Partnership and the Racial Equity Agenda are joined at the heart. Faith communities are on the move, and we'd like the City Council to step out and join us in this historic quest.
Mr. Holkinson, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Louis Alamehu, followed by Ann Galloway. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
It's Alamayu.
Alamayu, thank you.
I live at 2000 Seaberry Avenue, in Minneapolis, of course. To quote Hibbing's Bob Dylan and Seattle's Jimi Hendrix, "Let's not speak falsely now. The hour is getting late." I am currently employed as community faculty at the Higher Education Consortium for Urban Affairs. I've been there for a total of seven years, and I found myself in my 60s, living in community as an elder across multiple cultural communities. As my bloodlines are African, Native American, and European, I have consciously sought to build bridges through the way I live in the world. My family, friendships, and work-life reflect a cross-section of this world. I speak, I try to speak with clear intention, expansion, thoughtful understanding, and compassion. We are at what is developing into a global environmental perfect storm. Over the last 200 years, with the Industrial Revolution, we have been recklessly burning fossil fuels as if there was no tomorrow, and right now, from where we stand, we can see the possibility of no tomorrow. How many tomorrows in the 20th century will there be unless we do something drastically different than we've done over the past 200 years? We need to do this thinking about our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. Things are already in place. We've sown some seeds that are going to cause us to harvest a pretty bitter harvest. This motivates me with great enthusiasm, optimism, and also concern about the fate of both the Clean Energy Partnership and One Minneapolis. I would like for them to be fully funded. These are not random line items in the budget. They are significant tools for the building and sustaining of democracy and have implications for our survival as a species.
Mr. Alamehu, your, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Ann Galloway, followed by Tim Springer.
I live at 4354 28th Avenue South. I would like you not only to restore, but to increase the funding to the Clean Energy Program and also the Racial Equity Programs. It is fiscally irresponsible to cut the programs that invest in our fellow citizens and Minneapolis's future. It will cost taxpayer more money in the near future if you cut these programs. I'm telling you from experience, something I think councilperson Yang can understand. I come from and spent most of my life in Fresno, California, where during the past 20 years, the city of Fresno has made more and more cuts to citizen improvement programs, and it resulted in the higher, highest per capita crime in the whole nation, caused businesses to leave, which resulted in increased unemployment of around 20% and lower tax revenue for the last two decades. Is that what you want from Minneapolis? No amount of police officers have stopped the violence or gang activity in Fresno, and the cuts cost the city 10 times the amount they cut in the first place. While living there, I also suffered through the devastating energy crisis that was man-made by private energy companies looking to make more money and didn't care about the community they would destroy. Because of the continuous brownouts and the very high cost of electricity, small businesses had to close. The elderly, the sick, and many children died. People had to decide whether to spend money on food or electricity, especially when it was 110 degrees weather for weeks at a time. Just imagine if we had brownouts during the winter when it's below zero for weeks at a time. It is because my experience that I strongly, strongly urge you to fully fund the Clean Energy City Utility Partnership and the Racial Equity Programs. Do what is responsible for all the citizens of Minneapolis and the future of our city.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Springer, followed by Martin Medansky. Mr. Springer.
Good evening, Chair Johnson and councilmembers. My name is Tim Springer. I live at 2836 18th Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'm here representing Minneapolis Energy Options and its umbrella organization, Community Power, for which I serve on the board, and we support restoring the Community Energy Partnership budget to $150,000. We remain excited about the partnership. The city, our advocacy group, and many others spent years getting to this point, but we have serious concerns about the partnership's ability to fulfill its purpose if its budget is anything less than $150,000. I encourage you to honor your commitment, and when I refer to commitment, I'm referring to the Memoranda of Understanding that you have with Excel Energy and CenterPoint Energy on page two of these memoranda. Item four says, "The parties each commit to provide staff and resources appropriate to complete this work." And what is meant by resources to complete the work? Then I refer to page 24 of the Energy Pathways Study, which recommends, quote, "Dedicate funding through 1% of franchise fee revenue," end quote, which, based on 2013, would suggest $260,000 per year. So the $150,000 is already a pared-back number. Not funding the partnership to leverage significant resources is penny-wise and pound-foolish. Between 2008 and 2012, the city reduced greenhouse gas emissions from its own city-owned buildings and vehicle fuel by 12% and saved $6 million. If properly funded, the partnership will leverage resources and teamwork from the utilities, citizens, nonprofits, and businesses, making energy progress and serving our most vulnerable, serving all of our residents, including especially our most vulnerable.
Mr. Springer, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Martin Medansky. Martin Medansky. Betty Tysel, and then Lee Samuelson. Mr. Medansky? And I wanted to note, we've been joined by Mayor Hodges. Mr. Medansky?
Yes. I live at, I live at 2800 East 31st Street, which is Trinity Apartments, just south of Lake Street, in the Longfellow neighborhood, and I'm speaking really on behalf of the, the mayor's budget for diversity, for diversity education, because, you know, we, we know what's happened. We know that there have been, like, three shootings, well, more than that, incidents where young African-American men have been, you know, have been killed in confrontation with the police. I mean, we had Michael Brown, Tamir Rice, and then Eric Gardner, and, and others I can't, can't think of, and, you know, this is, but we're still living with the legacy of slavery and Jim Crow, and we're going to be for the foreseeable future. And as I do want to preserve public safety, but we also need the diversity education too, and, and I, I think the way to pay for it, rather than, than a big increase in property tax would be a sales tax, maybe a, a 1% sales tax, and I, I'm on a fixed income, and I, I don't, you know, I mean, I don't pay income taxes, and I'd be willing to pay that tax in order to be able to fund these priorities, because I, I think it's, it's necessary. It's necessary in the society we live in. You know, we need both public safety and diversity. In fact, the police do need to be trained in how to deal with African-Americans and other, and Latinos and Somalis and other minorities. It's not one or the other, and I, and I think the revenue should be there for both. I think a small sales tax, I don't think, at least for me, I wouldn't find it a burden.
Mr. Medansky, your time is over. Thank you very much. Betty Tysel, and then Lee Samuelson. Ms. Tysel?
Good evening. My name is Betty Tysel. My address is 4155 Garfield Avenue South in Kingfield. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I would first like to thank you for increasing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund by more than $2 million. We have plenty of new luxury rentals in Minneapolis without an equally visible number of new jobs paying luxury wages, so thanks for your increased commitment to affordable housing. I'm also here to ask you to restore the proposed budget for the One Minneapolis Fund and the Clean Energy Partnership. We need the projects, the progress, and the visibility that both the One Minneapolis Fund and the Clean Energy Partnership will provide. While I was writing this paragraph this afternoon, I got a call about this hearing and the, and the budget cuts from WHAM, Women Against Military Madness. I was so glad to hear from them, because it's a signal to me that more and more people are starting to connect the dots on all these issues. Your 7 to 6 vote was like a loud chord on a horribly out-of-tune piano, but we can tune the piano. You can restore funding to One Minneapolis and the Clean Energy Partnership. I'm one of many Minneapolitans working in support of the Clean Energy Partnership. Cutting it would be a bad move in terms of how the utilities view the city. Excel and CenterPoint are not going to take the lead on this. We need to lead. They are businesses. We are a community. Let's lead. We're running out of time as a species. We cannot afford to move backward on any project that would reduce emissions. Please restore funding for the Clean Energy Partnership. And as far as cuts to the mayor's proposed budget for One Minneapolis, I really can't imagine a better time to fund more projects that will increase civic engagement in under-representative groups, particularly people of color.
Ms. Tysel, your time is up. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Lee Samuelson, and then Bunny Robinson. Mr. Samuelson?
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Lee Samuelson, 2836 18th Avenue South. I'm speaking on behalf of Community Power. We want to make sure that both the Clean Energy Partnership and the One Minneapolis funding be restored. We are organizing, and we're serious about the new partnership delivering change. We have hosted dozens of community education events around the city to build a base of informed citizens who can be active and involved for this partnership. We have submitted hundreds of petition cards to, to City Council members, Excel and CenterPoint for a robust inclusive partnership. Through this process, I've heard hundreds of people who had signed petition cards expressing a sense of hope and excitement, and we have already suggested nine program ideas. We're excited for the partnership to implement, such as a multi-family unit energy efficiency program, and Community Power also supports the One Minneapolis Fund, because its outreach and community engagement will help make the partnership programs available and accessible and relevant to low-income communities and groups from diverse cultural backgrounds that need them the most. Right now, we are more aware of the White House award-winning Clean Energy Partnership than ever. The coalition we have with neighborhood engagement, racial equity, and economic justice groups is stronger than ever before. City Council now has the, the opportunity to harness this powerful momentum we see here in this room and direct it toward making the new Clean Energy Partnership successful and inclusive towards people of all backgrounds, and in order to deliver the results, we believe there needs to be a high-quality, full-time staff person who is hired to focus on the partnership, which means keeping the $150,000 intact will allow the city to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson. Thank you. Bunny Robinson, followed by M.J. Bauer. Ms. Robinson?
My name is Bunny Robinson. My address is 12-800 Meadow Circle, Minnetoka, Minnesota. I'm the board chair for the Conflict Resolution Center, and I'm speaking in opposition to the budget decisions regarding CRC. This year, the Conflict Resolution Center served 2,309 Minneapolis residents. I repeat, 2,309. CRC's work focuses on neighborhood and community relations as well as addressing racial disparities for risk at youth, who are at youth, especially in educational systems. The city has funded our work for many, many years, because CRC's work applies to many city departments. So it is unfortunate that CRC's racial disparities, community, and neighborhood relations work is no longer being funded through contracts with the city, especially at a time when the police department and residents of the community are in great need of having more dialogue with each other. In 2014, we received funding from the city of Minneapolis for our work, but in 2015, we are not receiving funding. Yet, CRC has been a valued city partner for over 30 years with contracts to do this work. Finally, like many other organizations who receive funding to do similar work, we also feel that cuts to the One Minneapolis Fund will have a broad negative impact on organizations like ours who are aligned with the city's goals and are committed to building an inclusive Minneapolis. Thank you, councilmembers, for your time and for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. M.J. Bauer, followed by Mike Griffin. Ms. Bauer?
Good evening. My name is M.J. Bauer. I live, I live at 7609 Gleason Road, and I too am a board member for the Conflict Resolution Center, and I'm here to oppose the budget decisions that have been made to eliminate funding for the Conflict Resolution Center. In 2014, CRC mediated Minneapolis residents in housing cases, neighbor-to-neighbor cases, family conflicts, elder conflicts, community development issues, and business issues. In addition to that, CRC provided conflict resolution training for over 1,500 Minneapolis residents. The city of Minneapolis has been very satisfied with our work over the last 30 years. We are so closely integrated with the city of Minneapolis that if you go to the city of Minneapolis website and, and go into the search box for mediation, it takes you directly to the Conflict Resolution Center website. We, we want to provide this expert service as much as we have in the past or more. In 2014, we received funding, and in 2015, we are receiving no funding. So I just want to point out at this time, we too have many finger waivers, but they are all in the overflow room, so a virtual finger wave from my other 10 colleagues in the overflow room. I just want to say that we're very committed to the city's goals, and we see mediation as an excellent way to resolve conflicts, address issues of power imbalance and racial inequity, and I thank the city council members for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Griffin, followed by Timothy Denherter Thomas.
So I'm Mike Griffin. I live over at 7 Barton Avenue Southeast, and I stand as a field coordinator with, with Neighborhoods Organizing for Change. They seek to build power and leadership in low-income and communities of color. One of those powerful people is Elaney Johnson, who's an organizer, and I'll give her the balance of my time.
Ms. Johnson? Welcome.
Again, my name's Elaney Johnson, and I'm here because last week, Minneapolis decided...
Your, your address, please.
3205 17th Avenue South.
Thank you.
Last week, Minneapolis decided to cut $620,000 from its $1.2 billion budget, including half of the proposed funding for racial equity and energy-saving initiatives. We, as Neighborhoods Organizing for Change, you know, we believe that you can fund the $212,000 that was proposed by Mayor Betsy Hodges for the One Minneapolis Fund and the $75,000 for the Clean Energy Partnership. There are many ways to balance a budget, and, and saving $2.50 a year for homeowners in some of the wealthiest areas of the city will be in lieu of developing leadership in your community. Creating jobs and doing a tiny part in building equity into a system where systemic, you know, racial inequity exists. Cutting half of the funding for the Clean Energy Partnership will mean the city will not be able to hire a staff person, as someone else has spoken on. The partnership presents $450 million in annual citywide energy expenses in Minneapolis. These are funds that can, to be used to drive clean energy job creation and offset energy costs for low-income families. Again, one, a little part to combat systemic racial oppression and to build equity into the system. Um... part to combat systemic racial oppression and to build equity into the system. The One Minneapolis Fund, by providing resources to community organizations for grassroots leadership development, is important beginning stop to investing in our emerging leaders, leaders for the city that you counsel. The One Minneapolis Fund creates leaders, and you will be doing-
Ms. Johnson, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President.
Timothy Denherter Thomas, and then Ryan Stupera?
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could we have the previous speaker repeat her address? We didn't catch it for the record. I'm sorry.
Ms. Johnson, could you repeat your- Did you get it? Thank you. All right, let's start over. Okay, Mr. Denherter Thomas.
Timothy Denherter Thomas. I live at thirty-one hundred Longfellow Avenue South. I'm speaking in favor of restoring the budget cuts, like restoring the budget for the Clean Energy Partnership and the One Minneapolis Fund. When I heard about the December first vote, it took me totally by surprise. And part of that reaction was around, you know, we've just been leading all of this, all of this work around social justice and economic justice in the city, and was just recognized by the White House for the city's leadership as a climate champion. But then when I thought about it a little more, I remembered all of the work that we've been doing all of this year, hosting house parties and community events across the city, and kind of realizing the same, the same factors at play. You know, a lot of people just don't really understand what's at stake here. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity to maybe paint a little bit of a picture of really what is at stake. There's a, there's a research study by the American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy, talking just about energy efficiency, saying that we could cut our energy use society-wide by thirty percent. If you look at the four hundred and fifty million dollars a year that we spend in Minneapolis, and that's a conservative estimate of thirty percent, there's other folks who say it's seventy or eighty, you know, that's a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in annual savings. And if you look at the equity aspect of that, low-income people, who are often people of color, are spending, you know, on average, below the poverty line, seventeen percent of their incomes on energy. So this disproportionately affects low-income people. We really need to see the jobs and economic development that can be created here in Minneapolis through clean energy. So I'm going to ask that you restore the funding for the Clean Energy Partnership and the One Minneapolis Fund. It's time for action, not just talk. And I'm really looking forward to working with all of you at the city council and all of the staff in various departments here in the city to create a just and sustainable future that reflects the future that we believe in.
Thank you. Ryan Stupera, followed by Andy Hessness.
Thank you. Ryan Stupera, thirty-two thirty-six Garfield Avenue South. I'm the board chair of Neighborhoods Organizing for Change, and I would like to open my spot for a community member, Lena Gardner, to speak.
Ms. Gardner?
Gardner, Lena Gardner. I live at one five six Fourteenth Avenue Northeast, Minneapolis, obviously. I just really want to remind a lot of council members that came in, like my own, that you voted, you were voted in on a platform about racial equality, and this is, this is where you step up and act for it and not cut the funding for, for the One Minneapolis Fund. We really have an opportunity here. We need more funding for racial equality, not less. We had a meeting last week at NOC. Over three hundred and fifty people were there, and they said, "We need more, not less." If you're looking for somewhere to cut it, I encourage you maybe to think about cutting the ten million dollars from the police because we need better solutions, and this is a way to do it.
Thank you. Andy Hessness, and then Abdul Kadir Hassan. Mr. Hessness?
Hello. I'm Andy Hessness. I live at thirty-nine thirty-two Eighteenth Avenue South in the Eighth Ward, and I also work at the Native American Community Development Institute in the Sixth Ward. And in both of those capacities, I really see day-to-day what the impact of the disparities that exist in our city are. So I'm here to speak in favor of restoring some of the things that were cut out of the mayor's budget at the last budget meeting. I feel really strongly that addressing the disparities that we have in the city now is going to take investment and commitment on the part of the council. And as you can see with all the folks here in this room, there really is strong support within the community for funding and investing in these initiatives. Things like homeownership support, the One Minneapolis Fund, the racial disparities study, these are the things that are going to allow us to identify the challenges we have, figure out how we can address them, and then start to move forward. And a big piece of this also related to equity is going to be the Clean Energy Partnership and really appropriately funding that. The energy system we have now disproportionately impacts people of color and low-income communities. This is something that's completely unacceptable, and we all should be really conscious that the energy infrastructure, even outside of the boundaries of our city, disproportionately impacts tribal communities throughout the state. So when you see pipelines and things like that, these, these are ways that tribal communities are impacted. And in the work we do at NACTI, it's very important in native communities that we are really finding ways to have clean energy that supports everyone. So I ask you to restore the money that was cut, and let's move forward together. Thank you.
Abdul Kadir Hassan, and it looks like Amos Gerard, and Mr. Hassan is number fifteen, and Mr. Gerard is number sixteen. I'm sorry, I haven't been calling out the numbers. Mr. Hassan?
My name is Abdul Kadir Hassan. I reside in thirteen twenty-three East Twenty-second Street, Park Avenue three zero three, Minneapolis, Minnesota, five five four zero four. And I'm here today to tell the council members that we, as a city council, we as a city, have to stand together and do what's right and left behind what's wrong. The only way we can do, I'm the chair of the Minneap- and Fungero Village Neighborhood, and I serve the community engagement as a chair. And for the One Minneapolis funding, it helped us a lot. We hosted this one of the best tomorrow Independence Day, and by cutting it, it would have a good impact to middle-class community. And we have, you know, this was one of the event that brought Minneapolis all together. We came as a city, all the council members, I'm sure, you know, fifty percent of the city council members were there, including the mayor. As a city, we have to stand together and move forward. I urge all of you to stand and do what's right and to help, and what is it, NOC, who are always there helping the youth, and you know what's happened in North Minneapolis and across the nation, we got to be a city that's, you know, example. We want other cities to look after us. And the only way we can do is today, the decisions that you make today will help the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amos Gerard, and then Meg Allen. Mr. Gerard?
Actually, my name is Matt Gerard.
Excuse me.
And I live at nineteen twenty Fourth Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'm here to be behalf to speak as I'm president of the Minneapolis High Rise Representative Council. We are asking funding from the city council for funding for Project Lookout, which is a volunteer program working with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. The residents of the Housing Authority help with security in the high rises, especially with severe budget cuts to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority within the last, since probably two thousand and eight, severe budget cuts. And we're asking that some of the funding that has been proposed by Mr. Wasami and Lisa Goodman and things like that be included in this budget. I think it was fifty-five thousand. These are the most vulnerable adults that live in the city of Minneapolis. These people need security. They volunteer over sixty thousand hours a year of free volunteer time, of their own time. Some of these people send all eight hours a day at the front desk, signing in residents and their visitors and anybody in the community to help provide security with Securitas and the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. They should all be commended in all the work that they have done over the years. They work very hard. They need your support. The funding is being cut. It's been cut to the Minneapolis High Rise Representative Council, and that we need all the funding we can have to keep these people safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gerard, Meg Allen, number seventeen, Meg Allen. Ms. Allen, and followed by number eighteen, Chris Houston. Can you get through? We're going to get you a mic. We're going to get you a mic so that you get recorded. Guys, if you can, it might be a little bit of a-
How's that?
Yep, hey, that's very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Ms. Allen?
I apologize for the people sitting behind me that I can't see your face, but each of you city council members, I thank you very much for your work and dedication to this great city of Minneapolis.
And your address, please.
My name is Meg Allen, and I live at four five five zero Humboldt Avenue North. I'm here, I'm just a little peon. I'm a board member of the Lynn Bohannon Neighborhood Association. But our neighborhood is on a mission right now. And the last year, our Crime and Safety Committee, we decreased the crime in our community by fifty-three percent, which I think is some, some hard work. Our board also volunteers over fifteen hundred hours a month, working with the neighborhood people in the community. We just did a great, that great holiday on Forty-fourth, and we are active with a garden. We have a beautiful garden. We are partnering with Jenny Lynn School. A lot of us volunteer with a reading program there. We have the, we want to have the funding so that we can put together a community center that can work with the youth in, in training job skills and also for where our board can meet and increase the activities that we have around the community. So I think that, that, I mean, we are really needing that funding for the, the, I got to write it down, that, that One Fund Minneapolis. I don't always know that technical stuff. I apologize.
Thank you. Chris Houston, followed by John Farrell, looks like. Ms. Houston?
Kalise Houston, twenty-eight oh-nine Park Avenue South. I'm here with the DFL African-American Caucus, and we're here to voice our opposition to any cuts in equity funding. Our caucus members, year after year, have been loyal to the party that most of you belong to, marching in parades, door-knocking, and contributing hard-earned money to support your campaigns. We're now asking that you support any policy, legislation, and actions that will allow our community to strengthen itself. Across the board, Minnesota has some of the worst racial disparities in the country. This money would be well-spent addressing these disparities aggressively. In light of Governor Dayton's recent attention to the child welfare system, it would be fitting to allot funds there to investigate and address the disproportionate representation of black youth. We care about our community, our schools, a pollution-free environment, decent housing, and support for our young leaders. Keeping the equity funding intact shows that you support these things as well as your support to your loyal constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. John Farrell, number nineteen, followed by Lena Needham, number twenty. Mr. Farrell?
Good evening, and thank you, madam chair and city council members. I'm John Farrell. I live at fifty-five thirty-three Portland Avenue South in Ward eleven. I'm delighted to have an opportunity to speak to you this evening about the city budget and particularly the Clean Energy Partnership. I just wanted to take a moment to say that the fact that we're here represents that we've already won a major victory, because if we wanted to have conversations about our energy budget two years ago, we'd be at the state legislature, or we'd be at the Public Utilities Commission. But we're here in the room with the people who represent us in our community in the city of Minneapolis, and that's a big triumph. And I guess the other thing I would say is, don't make us regret it. We're excited to be here in this room to make these decisions, but we need to put the money on the table to make sure that we're able to follow through on what the White House has already recognized as Minneapolis as a climate champion, as an innovator with its utilities. Our utilities have come to the table after an awful lot of wrangling. They weren't exactly willing to do this two years ago when we started out, and we have browbeat them and worked with them to get them to come and extend that hand of friendship to accomplish an awful lot around energy opportunities in this city. So I'm not only here to support restored funding for the Clean Energy Partnership and as much as we can possibly put into it, but also recognize the fact that many of the other items in the budget that have been hurt by the proposed cuts work in tandem with that Clean Energy Partnership to make sure that the economic benefits that we can reap from this partnership will be spread to everybody in the city of Minneapolis. I think the last thing I want to say about it is that I feel like, unlike many other items in the budget, the Clean Energy Partnership in particular is one that's going to pay dividends, not just in terms of social or societal dividends, but actual economic dividends. We can have energy-saving programs for the city and city buildings that will actually pay back that amount of money that is invested by the city in the Clean Energy Partnership. So I strongly support and hope that you will support restoring the funding for the Clean Energy Partnership and the other programs to make sure that its benefits are spread to everyone in the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you. Lena Needham, number twenty, and twenty-one is Michelle Schroder. Ms. Needham? Welcome.
My name is Lena Needham, and I live at thirty-one hundred Longfellow. I'm in opposition to the budget cuts, specifically to the budget cut regarding the Clean Energy Partnership. And there's various reasons for that, but I think we need to be thinking about what measures that sends to the utilities that we're going to cut the budget in half before the partnership has even gotten up off the ground. And we spend quite a bit of money, every single year in Minneapolis, we spend four hundred and fifty million dollars on energy. And this partnership has a lot of goals where a lot of that money could come back into our community and create equity. And I, I think it's a small investment when you think of how much return we could get in the long run. I don't have much more to say than that, but thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Schroder, followed by Mary McGowan or McGovern. Michelle Schroder? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Schroder. I'm at six oh-one Ridgewood Avenue. Thank you for hosting the hearing. I am testifying as a resident. I am opposing the cuts, all the cuts to the recently proposed budget, but I'm going to be speaking specifically to the Clean Energy Partnership. I know that there weren't very many people here at the hearing last Monday, but there was a city council member who said that a lot of this work could be shifted to current staff, and that staff needs to stiffen their backbones. And it was also said that their constituents are not going to care if the Clean Energy Partnership is cut in half. I'm not sure if they went out to the constituents and asked these questions, but it's pretty clear that a lot of constituents actually do care about this. My concern is actually about current staff, and this was even before winning the White House's award about the Climate Action Championship. And I feel like the city staff is being constrained by this, and I feel like they're being set up to fail. I personally would not want that on my resume. I would consider firing my resume out to someplace else. If we lose current city staff, we're going to be in a position where we cannot meet the commitments that we've been making for over two years now. And I want to make sure that we can signal to the utilities, and I hope the silver lining for all of this is that the amount of people that have shown up today, this is the silver lining, citizens, community, we are going to be watching. And we are going to be supporting this. There's going to be an annual report coming out while this whole new franchise, the whole new franchise agreements are under the duration. I want to also point out, if I have some time here, the Energy Pathways Study originally recommended one percent of the estimated franchise fees for 2015 be dedicated to this. The fees are estimated to be twenty-nine million. That, one percent of that is two hundred and ninety thousand, and the mayor's proposed budget, that was already cut in half when it was brought to city council here at a hundred and fifty thousand. City council decided to cut that in half again. I think that is incredibly problematic. I want to restore funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary McGovern, and Lisa Anderson is next. Ms. McGovern is twenty-two, and Ms. Anderson is twenty-three.
Good evening. My name is Mary McGovern, twelve twenty-five Southeast Street, Elliott Twins. I'm treasurer of the Minneapolis High Rise Representative Council, the citywide public housing high-rise tenant organization, representing over five thousand Minneapolis citizens living in the forty-two high-rises managed by the MPHA. I spoke before you in November the eighteenth, budget hearing about city support for public housing resident needs related to security funds for fixing up and maintaining our buildings. I'm joined this evening by public housing residents from across the city, most of them who are Project Lookout volunteers, which I'm so proud of. I want to thank you for listening to our concerns, and especially thank you for our support of Project Lookout. As I said before, Project Lookout volunteers have stepped up to help fill the gap left by security and funding cuts, which was, which was half. Over two hundred resident volunteers contributing over sixty-four thousand hours a year in twenty-nine high-rises- helped to keep our buildings and neighborhoods safe. I am grateful that public housing residents are seizing the opportunity to become more connected to our city government, and am optimistic that over the coming months, you will have opportunities to learn more about us, our concerns, and our contribution to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Anderson, followed by Jeff Strand. And Ms. Anderson is number 23, Mr. Strand is number 24. Ms. Anderson? No, Mr. Strand. Welcome.
Thank you. President Johnson, Mayor Hodges, council members, Jeff Strand, I live at 5100 Thomas Avenue North in the 4th Ward, Chingle Creek neighborhood. The clerk has a handout from NCEC Commissioner Wychin that she asked if, because I was earlier up, if she would, the clerk would allow that to be passed out. So I'm here to briefly urge you to continue support for the cost of living increase for 2015, as well as ongoing neighborhood program funding. I also urge that you support restoration of full funding for the innovative and important One Minneapolis Fund that seeks to actualize our city's conversation about making community engagement more inclusive and equitable. So I'm standing here to remind you about letters from organizations like the Lindell Neighborhood Association and the Northside Neighborhood Council, remind you about the value added by Minneapolis neighborhood organizations. And I truly appreciate the council's thoughtfulness in the staff directions regarding 2015 policy review for the consolidated TIF. I strongly support the progressive and racial equity agendas that are being put forth tonight. I want to personally, I listened to your council markup, and so I think Councilmember Quincy deserves a call-out, and I think other councilmembers have been former Ways and Means Budget Chairs and the mayor, but listening to that, was it a four-hour meeting, and just think of the work that Councilmember Quincy accomplished in that role, I appreciate that as a taxpayer and resident. I really think it's critical that you fully fund the One Minneapolis Fund. It is doing innovative community engagement program that's focused on getting underrepresented and disenfranchised groups involved. We're making progress. I think you've seen the Boards and Commissions' diversity report. Last point, I just have to mention that if you look at Statute 275.065 subdivision 3C, it does speak to the timing of the public hearings. And I think the November 24th date is the legal date after which the formal hearing is to be proposed. So, I know it was remarked about the taxpayers hadn't received their proposed notices on the 18th. That explains it.
Mr. Strand, your time is up. Thank you. Next is Corwin Morton, and after that, Maher Saroar. I'm probably terribly, number 25 and number 26. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Corwin Howard Morton III. I live at 1707 Third Avenue South. I'm a disabled veteran, and I was called here as a Project Lookout Coordinator of my building, 1707 Third, to support the rest of my team from all over the city. Mary McGovern practically said everything that needs to be said, so I'm here for moral support.
Thank you.
I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maher, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sure I butchered your name, sorry. Tell me.
First of all, just wanted to say thank you. My name is Mahir Saru. I live at 729 Eighth Street Southeast, and I'm an organizer with the Minnesota Public Interest Research Group, or MPRG. So, we've heard councilmembers say there's a big difference between talking progressive and acting progressive. I couldn't agree more. But I'm here to challenge the rhetoric that this proposal of budget cuts to racial equity and clean energy programs is acting progressive. It's not acting progressive when you cut leadership development programs in communities of color. It's not acting progressive when you cut assistance for low-income families to pursue energy efficiency. It's not acting progressive when you cut outreach and counseling programs for homeowners in communities of color. It's not acting progressive when you cut a partnership that created an alternative to corporate control over our energy sources. It's not acting progressive when you cut funding that drives clean energy job creation, providing cleaner and safer air for communities of color. If the city's budget means we can't properly staff the Clean Energy Partnership, Minneapolis will miss major opportunities to tap federal funds to create innovative energy solutions in our community. The city of Minneapolis has been recognized for talking like a climate action champion. Now the city must follow through with its commitments and act like a climate action champion. If councilmembers want to talk about being progressive, they should look to the citizens of Minneapolis for guidance. Our communities are acting progressive every day as we fight against the systematic racism that has plagued our city for too long. Making backroom deals to cut racial equity programs without consulting communities of color is not acting progressive, and no amount of rhetoric is going to convince us otherwise. So we urge City Council to restore the cuts that you've made to these programs. It's about time you acted progressive. Thank you.
Justin Halverson, number 27, followed by Tim Harland Marks, number 28. Mr. Halverson?
Thank you, councilmember. I'm Justin Halverson. My address is 1071 12th Avenue Southeast. I'm a student, I'm 22-years-old. I've organized with Fossil Free Minnesota at the U of M, we're working to divest the U from fossil fuels, to address climate change, and to stop funding what is the problem of racial inequity and screwing over communities in countries across the world. I also organized the first sustainability coalition in four years at the U of M, which brought 17 student groups together who are concerned with climate change. And just recently had a proposal for a community garden approved at the U of M, which is the first community garden that's ever existed, thank you, at the U of M. And it's a partnership between the Cedar Riverside Community, Bryan Coyle Center, Augsburg Community Gardens, and the West Bank Community Coalition. I'm committed, I'm committed to our community. I'm committed to Minneapolis, and I know you guys are too, and I appreciate the work that you do. Funding One Minneapolis and funding this Clean Energy Partnership is the right step, the step in the right direction that the City Council can take. And I mean, as a 22-year-old, I'm scared, what's a not profane word that I can use to describe how scared I am of the future and what's going on in our country right now? And what's going on in Minneapolis, as far as dirty energy, as far as police brutality. If we have the chance to fund programs that are helping us and pushing us forward.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Harland Marks, number 28, followed by Matt Barthelamy, number 29. Mr. Harland Marks?
Good evening, council. My name is Tim Harland Marks, I live at 2401 Blaisdell Avenue South, and I'm here tonight with the Sierra Club North Star Chapter, which has over 3,000 members and supporters in Minneapolis. The Sierra Club was really disappointed to hear the results of December 1st vote to cut funding both for the Clean Energy Partnership and for really important racial equity initiatives such as One Minneapolis and the Racial Disparities Study with the Civil Rights Department, all to save homeowners a few dollars a year. The Clean Energy Partnership, as you've heard from many of my friends and neighbors here, is a unique first-in-the-nation program, which, if fully funded, will advance needed clean energy solutions to address issues of economic inequity, as well as the urgent threat of climate change. Cutting funding now sends the wrong message to our partners at Exile and Centerpoint, we need to fully fund this program. As some of you know, the North Star Chapter of the Sierra Club is committed to becoming an anti-racist, intercultural organization. And it's worth noting that Minneapolis, again, we've heard this tonight, but Minneapolis has some of the worst racial disparities in the nation. Actually grew up in Council President Johnson's Ward 4, we really, we can see that in stark visibility. We cannot wait to address this inequity. So while the Sierra Club appreciates its council's previous commitments to advancing climate solution and racial equity, we look to you now to restore funding to the Clean Energy Partnership and the racial equity programming like One Minneapolis Fund and the Study for Racial Disparities to the Civil Rights Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Barthelamy, number 29, followed by Flo Castner, number 30.
Hello, everybody. I'm actually going to cede my spot to fellow community member, Asha.
Thank you.
All right. When I say Black Lives, you say Matter.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Black Lives. Black Lives. My name is Asha Gildersleeve, and I live on 2019 Second Avenue South, and I am here on behalf of Black Lives Matter Minneapolis. And we are an organization, we're not an organization, we're just a group of people who are getting together to organize people and get people together. I don't know if you guys know about what happened with 35W South, and us bringing a bunch of people here to voice their opinion about how they feel about the wide public unrest that's happening right now. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of what's going on around the country, but people are on the streets. Ferguson has been on the streets for over 120-something days to show that Black Lives Matter and police brutality has got to stop. We are at a point where there's going to be no peace. I'm letting you know right now that the revolution is about to start, and we cannot do this alone. We are going to be on the streets, and we're going to be protesting, we're going to be organizing, and we're going to organize until we get justice, and we cannot do it alone. We need you guys to step up, because you guys have said that you will, you ran your, a lot of you ran your campaigns on equity. What does equity mean? Equity means that our black lives are not going to be dead on the street by the police. We don't want to see that anymore, and we want you guys to step up. So if that takes a vote against, if that takes taking money out of the police and putting it into equity, and whatever equity looks like, we want you guys to step up and make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Flo Castner, number 30, followed by Patty O'Keefe, number 31.
I'm Flo Castner, Art Love Manor, 800 Fifth Avenue North. Mayor Hodges, council staff, my 5th Ward Member Yang. I'm here to urge the imperative of restoration of the tax levy, which was dropped several years ago. It's 1.4 million, extending vital public services and police protection to over 20,000 low-income housing residents in the city. 5,000 of us in Minneapolis public housing high-rises, and the rest in scattered site, families, Section 8, project-based housing. And when we represent a diverse population in which 76 languages are spoken, and as was mentioned by my colleagues in MHRC, providing over 64,000 volunteer hours that you don't have to carry on your city budget, and MPHA doesn't have to carry on its. And providing vital sign-in and security patrol services that you don't have to contract for. We urgently need the money, because when the stimulus funds were granted several years ago to construct the Heritage Park Senior Services Center, Heritage Commons, and Feeny Manor.
Ms. Castner, your time is up.
The restoration was stopped. We need it restored.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Patty O'Keefe, and after, Patty O'Keefe, number 31, Michelle Horovitz, number 32. Ms. O'Keefe?
Hi, I'll put down my latte. Hi, my name is Patty O'Keefe, 8113 Virginia Circle North. So I'm here on behalf of Minnesota 350, an organization working to build a climate movement in Minnesota, and also sit on the steering committee for the Minnesota Youth Environmental Network. Tonight, I want to express my concern in the City Council voting to slash funding for racial equity and for the Clean Energy Partnership. So first off, I'd like to say a bit about racial inequity in Minneapolis. Multiple studies in the last three years have found that Minneapolis has some of the highest racial disparities in the country, around unemployment and access to affordable loans and housing. And we see similar disparities in education, health, and political representation in our city. So given this information, making a decision to cut funding for racial equity programs in our community is the last thing a Minneapolis City Council member should be doing. And maybe you don't agree that the funding is the most prudent way to tackle racial inequality, but slashing this funding is not the solution. The solution is to continue funding and work harder to make racial justice a priority in this city. Now for the Clean Energy Partnership. I know that this council takes climate change seriously, and I'm grateful for that as a young person. I'm grateful because it's projected we'll have fishless oceans by 2048, and a planet that can't support human life going into the next century if we don't curb greenhouse gas emissions. 74% of greenhouse gas emissions come from cities, and energy utilities are not responding to the issue as quickly and aggressively as we need them to, which is why the Clean Energy Partnership is so important. So I think you get climate change, but when making decisions to slash funding for projects like this, it makes myself and others doubt that you actually take the issue seriously. So this is extremely important funding for program implementation, so we can provide staff to ensure this project is actually successful. I don't understand the point in undertaking this project.
Ms. O'Keefe, your time is up.
We are not consciously setting it up for success, so I...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Michelle Horovitz, number 32, and Marcus Mills, number 33. Ms. Horovitz?
Good evening, thank you for being here, thank you for your service. My name is Michelle Horovitz, I live at 4409 Zenith Avenue South. I'm here on behalf of Appetite for Change. I'm a co-founder and the director of, this is a food justice organization in North Minneapolis. We're located at 1200 West Broadway. Our mission is to use food as a vehicle for building health, wealth, and social change. I'm here to oppose the budget cuts for the One Minneapolis Fund, the Clean Energy Partnership, the Civil Rights Disparity Study, and the CRC. We are actually a current grantee of the One Minneapolis Fund, and without that funding, we would not be able to build leaders of color, specifically black leaders in North Minneapolis, who are going to be the future of the community in speaking out against racial disparities. As you all know, Minneapolis is one of the most abominable cities on racial disparities, and disparities based on class in areas of health, economics, education, and all of those things are intertwined. Black lives do matter, and our work matters. And this funding is crucial. Without it, we would not be able to develop the leaders of tomorrow. You all were elected on a platform of equity, and to slash funding for the One Minneapolis Fund is completely in opposition of that platform. And with the remainder of my time, I give the balance to Salam Youssef.
Hi, my name is Salam Youssef, and I appreciate Michelle giving me her, the remainder of her time. And I just want to be another voice to say that it is completely ridiculous to slash any funding for equity in a state like Minnesota where we have incredibly high discrepancies between, between black and whites, and so many education and police stops. We are number one in, we just got an award for our energy championship, but we are not getting any awards for racial equity anytime soon, and slashing funding is the worst thing that we can do.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Marcus Mills, number 33, and Sean Smith, number 34.
Thank you. President Johnson, members of the City Council. My name is Marcus Mills, I live at 309 Sixth Street Southeast. And I would like to, you know, thank you for all that you've done, but I also would like to speak in support of the restoration of funding for both the Clean Energy Partnership and the One Minneapolis Fund. I look around the room, and I see a Minneapolis that I'm proud to say that I am a member of, a community whose face is varied and beautiful. of, a community whose face is varied and beautiful, and a people who have the energy and the dedication to come out and speak to all of us tonight. This is the kind of activism that we need to support, and we support it with funding. This investment will pay great dividends in equity and justice as we move forward. Speaking of dividends and speaking of energy, we have decided that our dedication to clean energy is something that we believe is one of the best things for our, for our society, and apparently, our parent nation has decided that it is one of the best things for our And we have developed a partnership that would help us deal with those matters. Apparently, we spend $450 million on energy in this city every year, and if 30% of that is waste, the $150,000 that we propose for the Clean Energy Partnership has a possibility of yielding nearly a thousand-fold in savings for this city. I suggest we do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean Smith, number 34, and Emmett Doyle, number 35. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Hodges, President Johnson, city council members, other residents. My name is Sean Smith. I live at 2420 West 24th Street. I've lived there since 2006. We own our home. My property taxes are actually not going up in 2015, so that's pretty good news for my family. The levy is going up, which is a little concerning, because it does set pace for the future, but that's really not why I'm here. I'm here because I feel really strongly about the issue of the chronically high property taxes in Minneapolis. This needs to be spoken to. It's a very, very split council, and every vote matters. So I want to be here to advocate restraint, many of which you also voted in on. High property taxes hurt everyone, and I'd like to make a point with you on how high taxes are versus cities we compete with. Progressives often look at Portland, Denver, Seattle as cities we'd like to emulate. We already have a lot in common. Among other things, we have historic neighborhoods, but some Minneapolis leaders are saying we need to be even more like them by sending $790,000 on separate bike lanes. I'm just going to pick on that one, because it kind of stands out at me. But there's a major difference between those cities and ours. I Googled historic neighborhoods, Woodland Park in Seattle, Alameda in Portland, Wash Park in Denver, and their taxes on an equally sized priced home equal to what we are in annual property taxes when you add them together. Those cities pay one-third of the property taxes that we pay in Minneapolis. It's really easy to find similar homes and neighborhoods where they're at. Now, thinking it was just a West Coast, non-snowy new city thing, I checked Boston, and they're two-thirds of Minneapolis. So please exercise restraint and prioritization as you finalize the budget. You've heard a lot of asks tonight, but we can't do everything. Just look at what other cities are able to do with lower property taxes. More sworn officers are great, but $2 million of new spending in this budget among different priorities, including separate bike lanes, when there are still so many unanswered questions on the benefits of those. So if you do respond to the speakers tonight, I might suggest you start there. Thank you.
Emmett Doyle, number 35, followed by Julia Curran, number 36. Mr. Doyle?
Yep. Hello. My name is Emmett Doyle of 703 Ninth Street South. I'm here in opposition to cuts to racial equity and clean energy. I'm a graduate of Environmental Studies from St. John's University, alum of the Minnesota Green Corps Program, and a unionized worker on food access and sustainability at North Country Food Alliance. When we talk about the communities most affected by fossil fuel industries, the first image that comes to mind is often the working-class, mostly white residents of rural Appalachia. While these communities are indeed greatly affected, they are not alone. The impact of fossil fuel was seen in 2004 in the flooded streets of New Orleans Lower Ninth Ward, and again in 2009, when many of the poorest and blackest neighborhoods on the East Coast were left without power or adequate supplies for weeks after Hurricane Sandy. To say nothing of the devastation both disasters and the trend of more intense hurricane seasons have visited upon the people of the Caribbean. While more intense storms hit the coast, inner cities swelter under more frequent and severe summer heat waves, where again, it is the poor and the racially disenfranchised who are at least able to get relief. As in North Minneapolis, after the tornado of 2011, when natural disaster strikes, the first response of government is often send in heavy-handed police first and humanitarian aid second. Other times, it is marginalized people that are thrust into the most dangerous first responder roles. For example, the thousands of low-level and nonviolent offenders of California who find themselves fighting wildfires for $2 a day, work that can hardly be called voluntary given their incarcerated status. Let's also remember the Innes-Tohten people of British Columbia and the Lakota of the Rosebud Indian Reservation, both of which are fighting or preparing to fight pipelines through or near their land, the indigenous women and youth being sexually trafficked in fracking boom towns, and the Alaskan natives of New Talk who have become the US's first climate refugees. My fellow CSBSJU student, Chen Dan Yan, recently presented her thesis on the distribution of environmental impacts here in the cities, and the results were not surprising, because they follow the nationwide rule. The neighborhoods with the most air and water pollution, the fewest green spaces, are consistently working-class communities of color, such as the Phillips and the North Side. While Eric Garner gasped, "I can't breathe," while being choked by the police on the streets of Staten Island, little Black boys and girls across the country are being choked and killed by asthma at five times the rate of their white counterparts who will be disproportionately...
Mr. Doyle, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Curran, number 36, followed by Happy Reynolds, number 37.
Hi. I'm Julia Curran. I live at 1325 West 25th and 1/2 Street, and I would like to tell you that I vote based on the past and the future. I'm a lifelong Minneapolitan. My relatives came from, or were Chinese, Irish, and Polish, second-generation Irish, fourth and fifth-generation Chinese in the US. And part of being somebody who's of mixed-race ancestry is that I've been very aware of how race is treated in Minneapolis, from a personal level, and as I got older, from a very broad level, and it is not an equal city. The studies back that up. We have more and more data showing that we're not a good place to get a start as a person of color. It isn't okay. It isn't something that I'm proud of, and when other friends share things on Facebook about how proud they are of Minneapolis, I can't do it. It's not a fair city for all of us. It needs to be. I also vote on my future. I would like to have kids. My father's 94. There's a chance that they might have lifelong life genes, as other people have mentioned. There's very frightening things on the horizon if we don't address climate change. I support protected bike lanes for that reason, and I support anything else that we can do to be protecting our environment for, and having a more equal base for all of us to get started and keep working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Reynolds, followed by Justin Kater, number 38. Ms. Reynolds?
Hi, Madam President, Madam Mayor. I'm Happy Reynolds. I live at 1916 15th Avenue South in South Minneapolis. I am here as a homeowner. I also own rental property, and I am a board-certified practicing physician in this state. I am asking for the following things to be returned to the budget. First is the Clean Energy Initiative. This is vital to the health of all of our citizens. I would argue it is a public health issue, and we need to start treating it as such. I view Minneapolis as someplace that has, we have such promise, and we can really be what our dream is, which is a leader to the nation, a shining north star, and we need to do that with clean energy initiatives. We need to actually take the stand, and people here are here supporting that, and I would urge you guys to put that back in the budget. I also would like you to return the money to One Minneapolis. Primarily, I would like to see the foreclosure prevention and also the ability for people to buy homes in Minneapolis. This actually creates real equity. It is wealth-building for people who, for 400 and 500 years, have been systematically shut out from building real wealth in this country, and that has been legally done, and we need to stop that trend now, and we need to actually let people in our city share in all of the benefits and actually build homes. I also would ask that we make sure we protect the home improvement money for homeowners that are most vulnerable. People in my neighborhood need this money to buy furnaces, often in roofs, and I would ask that we pass real legislation to do this, and I know people are concerned about this. I trust that you guys are smart and that you will be able to not pit homeowners against affordable housing and against people of equity. That is wrong. It is a paradigm that needs to stop, and many of us who are homeowners want it to stop. So please do that, and thank you very much.
Justin Kater, followed by Jennifer Lang. Justin Kater is number 38. Jennifer Lang, number 39. Mr. Kater?
My name is Justin Kater, and my wife Jen and I are homeowners living at 2421 Clinton Avenue South in the Whittier Neighborhood. We both have student loans to pay. I'm currently looking for work, and despite all of this, Jen and I could not care less about any financial savings that the proposed cuts to vital programs could provide. Even if it were hundreds of dollars, we'd still stand against it, because no financial savings are worth more to us than the greater good that One Minneapolis Fund, CRC, the Study for Racial Disparities, and a fully-staffed Clean Energy Partnership can provide. You've heard a lot of details about this already from others, and I just ask that you please don't cut funding for this. We want Minneapolis to be a leader for the rest of the country and for addressing racial inequity and the need for sustainable, renewable energy. Our current city government was elected largely by running on these issues that are direly in need to be addressed, and we ask that you please don't make our faith in you to be in vain. As homeowners who want to make this great city even better, we want to thank council members who will vote to restore funding for racial equity and clean energy initiatives and urge others to join them. We're not interested in saving a couple bucks. We're just interested in achieving racial equity and saving the planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Lang, number 39, followed by Tessa Witchen, number 40. Ms. Lang?
Yes. Hello. My name is Jennifer Lang, and I live at 2815 South Eighth Street in Minneapolis. Good evening, Minneapolis residents and city council. I am a native Minnesotan and just moved to Minneapolis as of last year. I also serve on the board of a really tremendous organization. It's actually an energy cooperative. I know most people are familiar with cooperatives. Many people are members of food co-ops. This cooperative is slightly different in that it is an energy cooperative. We help many people, people of all backgrounds, regardless of income, save on their energy bills. We offer things like community solar gardens, and we have weatherization work parties, teach people how to insulate their homes and save money that way. Thing about a community solar garden that's really special is that we, the community members, own the energy, and we know that that energy is clean. So when I heard about the recent vote to have the Clean Energy Partnership, I was embarrassed and I was alarmed. I couldn't believe that our city council members here in Minneapolis would want to go halfway on such a tremendous opportunity. My friends, this is a chance for Minneapolis, our city, to set a precedent for our entire But unless we have the courage and the resolution to align our beliefs with our actions, this tremendous opportunity will pass us by. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Tessa Witchen, number 40, followed by Sarah Whiting, number 41.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tessa Witchen. I am on the One Minneapolis Committee Chair, and I'm a member of the NCEC. Thank you for your time. As a member of the NCEC and the One Minneapolis Chair, we have had a tremendous opportunity to invest in our communities of color throughout the city of Minneapolis, and we did so with you and talking to you about it and sharing with you about our values and the issues that we were, pretty sure we were all on board for, and I can tell you, I was shocked when our money was cut. I am really excited about the programs we've been funding, many programs that are acting in your wards, many programs that are building up community throughout our city, programs that have achieved the efforts in, some of our first-year programs have seen members who have gone through their trainings be able to participate with boards and commissions and even to the level of some state government advisory groups, and I think the work is amazing and it needs to be supported. We were kind of out of shock, because we had no idea that anyone would consider throwing it away for the value of what is not really a very significant tax cut. So we are asking for you to reinstate it. As we've passed out, we have a picture here of our first two-years of grantees. I think everybody has gotten this. We're funding some amazing programs throughout the city, and there aren't other opportunities for this kind of funding, and we need to be the sort of city that says, "We value people of color, and we value help supporting them in achieving leadership positions across our city," and that is what the One Minneapolis Fund does. I highly encourage you to find some other ways of funding. We don't, there is, it is ridiculous to have us feel like we're fighting for money with residential high-rise committees, because those are both good things. It is, we should not be fighting over small pots when there's a, that's not the situation that we're in right now, and we are a city that it's time to step up. We don't need to try to keep low and be like other cities that may not care about building up diverse leaders in their community. That is what we need to be as Minneapolis is a leader in this. In Minnesota, we know that Minnesota...
Your time is up.
Is not where we need to be.
Thank you. And next is Sarah Whiting, followed by Kathy, number 41. Sarah Whiting, followed by Kathy Jones, number 42. Ms. Whiting?
Hi. I'm Sarah Whiting. I live at 3643 Tyler Street Northeast. I've been involved in the arts community here for a very long time. I'm a past NEMA board member. I coordinated Art-A-Worl for a couple of years, and I've had a studio in northeast Minneapolis for over 10 years. I wanted to speak out regarding the removal of funding for public art. In the past decade, our city's made great strides to ensure that we have a vibrant and vital arts community, and I think it's important to recognize how much that actually impacts the rest of our state. It brings, it drives the economy. It allows more people to see our city, and removing public arts funding, even if for one year, significantly chips away at the healthy community that is a cornerstone to a strong and welcoming city. Recently, I published a book showing the faces and telling the stories of people from our arts district, and I wanted to leave a copy here specifically for Ms. Hodges to remind you guys of this community and show again those faces that taking this funding away impacts. I do appreciate that you have a lot of issues to consider, and I also want to thank you for your time and energy that you devote to this city. Thank you. I was told to bring this to the clerk.
Next is Kathy Jones, number 42, followed by Wintana Melikin, number 43. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, council, president, mayor. My name is Kathy Jones, and I live at 4336 Fourth Avenue South. I am a community member in the Regina Field Neighborhood, and I've been a native of Minneapolis my entire life. I'm 50 years old. I'm a letter carrier, and I'm also a member, a core member of the People of Color Union Members, is who I'm representing tonight, also along with my family and my grandchildren. Wow, Minneapolis. We've come a long way. As a child, I watched out my backyard and watched the IDS building being built. I've seen so many good things come to our city, but still, for some of us, the disparity is huge. I am here in favor of restoring entire funding for the Clean Energy Partnership and One Minneapolis, and then some. Please add more. We need it. Council members, I beg you to please put the funding back in. We are shifting the paradigm. The community is speaking. You've seen how we've been working in the streets. The activists are talking. Do not turn your backs on us. Some of you ran on the campaign of equity. You need to finish the job that you said you would do. We're doing our part. I'm doing my part as a community member. I need you to partner with me. Restore the funding. It's important. We are a champion in this country. Be on the right side of history. The time is now. Don't let us down, council members. Thank you.
Wintana Melikin, number 43, followed by Owen Duckworth, number 44.
Hi. My name is Wintana Melikin, and I'd like to give my spot up for community member Roxanne O'Brien, who'd like to speak.
Ms. O'Brien?
Hi. I'm Roxanne O'Brien, and I live at 3306 Emerson Avenue North, Minneapolis, in Barb's Ward, and I think you guys are a little familiar with me. I bring a lot of controversy, and I heard you guys have a lot of sleepless nights over the conversations that I bring up, which is mostly about racial equity, white supremacy, you know, same old things that it seems so hard for us to talk about, and I've always felt like if we... Hello? I've always felt like if we continue to avoid these conversations, we won't get to the heart of what we're really fighting for, and so I guess I'm kind of burnt out on talking... And so I guess I'm kind of burnt out on talking about white supremacy and racial equity. I feel like at this point, everybody should kind of understand that it's needed. And if anything, I'm kind of frustrated because as you can see, I'm bringing my kids down here. Like, I mean, this is kind of, this is really hard stuff that you're putting on people. This is stressful and there's no reason why people got to come down here and beg you for basic human rights. I'm not really sure what's going on behind the scenes as far as politics. I'm not really good at it. I'm not good at being passive aggressive. I'm learning from you guys. But, and I know I better watch what I say because you still got to vote on whether or not I could be on the CAC committee, which I've fought pretty hard for and been on for about two years now. And a lot of these budget cuts are going to affect a lot of organizations that I've partnered with and have done really good things in the community. So I'm hoping that you guys can have a little more humanity and a little more thought process around how you're affecting people. I just want to read this quote real quick. I know that my time is up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your time is up. I'm sorry. We've been limiting everyone.
Okay. Hold on, everybody. All right. I know you love me, Barb. Give me one second.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Though this nation has proudly thought of itself as an ethnic melting pot, in things racial, we have always been and continue to be in too many ways essentially a nation of cowards.
Thank you.
Please get it together.
Owen Duckworth is next, followed by Joy Thram. Thram. Mr. Duckworth? I'm sorry, number 44, and Ms. Thram is number 47. Mr. Duckworth? Is he here? No? Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me? Carol? Oh. Joy Thram? Ms. Thram?
Hello. Three things called me to testify here tonight. My name is Joy Throm. I live at 5526 Humboldt Circle, the 13th Ward. I'm current co-chair of Minnesota Interfaith Power and Light, an organization dedicated to building a faith movement to address the disparages of climate change. We believe that climate change is a moral issue, an environmental justice issue, and that our faith and a faith movement can sustain us in our grief and fear over the degradation of creation. Secondly, I'm here as a member of First Universalist Church in South Minneapolis. Our mission, our church has defined its mission to look through every faith action we take through a racial justice lens, to let that guide us no matter what our privilege of class or race might be. Last, I'm a member, a resident of Ward 13, and I was dismayed and ashamed that my council representative brought this budget change forward and that the vote broke a pledge by many who are seated on the council to strive for a more equitable Minneapolis. I'm asking that the seven council members who voted for the latte levy, review your actions through the dual lenses of racial and climate justice and reverse your vote. Restore the funds to One Minneapolis and the Clean Energy Partnership. Let us move forward as a city where policy and decision-making is guided by racial and climate justice. Thank you.
Carol Pass is next, number 48, and Zoe Nicoli is after Carol, number 50. Ms. Pass?
Hi, thank you so much for letting me speak. My name is Carol Pass and I'm the Chair of East Phillips and I live in 2536 Eighteenth Avenue South, Minneapolis. People have spoken for a lot of things I believe in here, so I'm going to speak for one that doesn't seem to get, isn't getting enough press, I didn't think. I sent you a handout. I've taught, I taught philosophy for 25 years and I'm really in favor of boots on the ground and facts. And so I want to, I want to call your attention to the, if you received this handout. Did you have it? Okay. The very beginning. NRP, you can see the, you can see the arc when it goes up like this and homeownership and rental vacancy rates are skyrocketing. Everybody was so frightened that they put in this incredible program. You can see at the peak of this point of this thing, it wasn't even started, they just got, they weren't working with it, they just understood it and the hope immediately changed. The people fleeing the city and the boarded-in vacancy rate started to drop. If you go to the second page, it shows you the poverty rates. Same thing. Poverty rates are going up for children and families under 18, or families and children under 18. Poverty rates are going up and as soon as NRP starts, they turn around and they start going down. Why is that? Because people had hope, because there were things happening, because they had something to do and they, and they believed in their own neighborhood and all these people who were free labor came out and worked. And the last one, people, all the people all over, in East Phillips, anyway, in Phillips, all the people and people over 65, same thing. They, the poverty rate dropped. It went up and it dropped. The next page is this one. You can see all the polka dots? Those are, those are, when we really got going, that's the way it looked when, I just started noticing this. And these are the boarded-in vacancies all over Phillips. We were dying. We were falling off a cliff. Every meeting I went to, everyone wanted to leave town. Still.
Ms. Pass, your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, that's too bad. Well, anyway, look at the rest of it.
Thank you.
And there's some important things there. And I think we need to look at that and realize that we should be funding this and the consolidated tiff should go there.
Thank you. Ms. Zoe Nicole, followed, number 50, followed by Boyce Jones, number 52. Ms. Nicole?
Hello, I'm Zoe Nicolai and I live at 4140 Grand Avenue South. I'm here to speak in opposition to this budget and to ask that you restore the cuts to the First Minneapolis Fund and the Clean Energy Partnership Fund. I'm a board member of Minnesota Interfaith Power and Light and I'm the co-chair of Our Climate Change Minion at Shertricka Synagogue. I'm active in these groups because climate change keeps me up at night. I worry about what kind of planet we're leaving for my four grandsons and for all children and all of the next generations around the planet. Climate change is an economic and justice issue and it's already disproportionately impacting the poor and people of color. I've been proud of the work that Minneapolis has done, has been doing to create a more sustainable and just city and addressing issues of economic and racial injustice. But this budget is a step backwards. Please restore the cuts and continue to work to make Minneapolis a just and healthy environment for all of our citizens. The melting of the glaciers, the warming of the oceans, it's happening much faster than scientists thought it would. We are in a crisis. The work has to happen now. We can't wait. We need to have you restore these cuts. The work for racial justice can also not wait. All of our citizens deserve action on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Boyce Jones, followed by Dennis Hool, number 52 and number 53. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. To, so thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, Council. My name is Boyce Jones, 1506 Penn Avenue North. I have longtime advocated for weatherization, wind and solar in Minneapolis. I've worked on a number of projects, repowering High Bridge, Riverside, and just a number of great things that Minnesota and Minneapolis has gotten right. I've been, I was appointed to the Climate Change Advisory Group where I served on energy supply. I'm totally, I'm also a member of the Total Maximum Daily Load. In other words, I've been doing a lot of environmental work for a long time. I did not support the opposition to HERC nor, because my colleagues did support it, I faced a great deal of opposition, but again, that was my decision. I supported the Midtown biomass burner because it was a great plan and design that would have set the bar for inviting investment in Minneapolis' clean energy futures, but was scuttled by those enamored more by opposition politics than innovation and progress. Scorned by my colleagues, it was the right thing to do and I stand by it. But I believe we sent the wrong message. We don't seek innovative approaches that can inspire and set the bar for others to follow. I'm here today to implore you to rethink your commitment to a staff person for this partnership because it is very important work. The funding rollback is indeed the wrong message again, like the Midtown project that had talented, dedicated people investing their sweat and treasure to see progress. A tragic message the nation's first-ever clean energy partnership would be sending should this posture proceed. How would I know? I've never been paid one dime for the advocacy work that I've done. So I think as the only African American usually sitting around these stakeholder tables.
Mr. Jones, your time is up.
That's it.
Thank you. Dennis Hool, number 53, followed by Eleanor Westerly, number 56. And we have 60 people signed up. If you haven't signed up and would like to speak, please see the clerk because we're to the bottom of our list here. So, Mr. Hool?
Hi, Dennis Hool. I want to thank Chairperson Johnson for correctly pronouncing my name. I live at 5728 Upton Avenue South. I am the Armadage Neighborhood Association President and I also represent District Two of the NCEC, but I'm here as a Ward 13 resident. The talk about property taxes frustrates me very much. I, too, as a 13th Ward resident, am very embarrassed by this tax reduction and I don't drink coffee. I think, but the problem is we're debating a broken system. We have a property tax system that penalizes what the things we want, namely homeowner longevity. So I think the city council needs to take this opportunity to look at the property tax system so that we're taxing people at a fair rate and that the tax system, excuse me, achieves what it wants. That being said, I strongly oppose the cuts to the budget, mainly the equity and the energy portions. I know that the city council members, sometimes you're torn between voting between your ward and voting for the city, but I think at a time like this, with a budget like this, it's time to vote for the interests of the city. Thank you.
Eleanor Westerly, number 56, and then Sean Gesuski, number 57. Ms. Westerly? Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Eleanor Westerly and I live at 2012 Grand Avenue South and I want to thank my council member for voting properly. And I am just here to repeat what so many voices have been cursing on is that I am against any cut in equity and clean energy programming. I think all of the funding should be restored to the proposed, previous proposed levels. And I think it's, it's really telling that it's the racial justice, racial equity work and the Clean Energy Partnership that are some of the things that are being targeted for cutting because so often it's, it's the programs that help to restore our humanity and our shared ecology that end up on the cutting floor. And these are the programs that are actually most crucial for us to be living in equity, living in justice and living in sustainability. So please fully fund all of these. And that's really all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Sean Gesuski and number 57, and then Kenya McKnight, number 58.
Hello, I'm Sean Gesuski, 3132 22nd Avenue South, and I'm the Director of the Alliance for Sustainability. We have about 1,000 members in Minneapolis and I'm speaking in favor of the One Minneapolis Fund as well as the Minneapolis Energy Partnership. We had an amazing event last week with Appetite for Change up at the Urban League with more than 130 people envisioning how to create a better local food economy in North Minneapolis, working with like the Worth Food Co-op that's being established and expanding connections with farmers and, you know, the Minneapolis Schools, Farmer School Program. So I'm seeing where the money for the One Minneapolis Fund is making a difference. Also, I really hope we can have a full-time staff person working on the Minneapolis Energy Partnership. On my own block, we have five apartment buildings and we've had a very hard time getting the landlord to respond to the rebates that are available for him to put in LED lighting. We really need to find a way of getting regulatory services to tie in with the rebates from Excel so that in order to have a rental property license, you should really do your minimum energy efficiency investments. Also, we're looking at 300 new units of apartments on my block with the Highway of the Lake Development. We need to find new innovative funding sources through Excel so that these buildings can be made more efficient so that people over the next 50 years won't be paying a lot of money for heating and cooling. So also, community solar is happening very rapidly. The city needs to have a lot of staffing to take advantage of this opportunity. Otherwise, our residents might be locked out of the most affordable community solar gardens that are being developed over the next four months. So just, let's fully fund the One Minneapolis and the, and Energy Partnership. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Kenya McKnight, number 58, followed by Nassar Musa, number 59. Ms. McKnight?
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Kenya McKnight, I am a resident of North Loop, Third District, or Third Ward. I'm also the Vice President of the Neighborhood Community Engagement Commission, District Five. My district covers the south end of Broadway all the way up into Elliott Park neighborhood. So while I am not here to speak on behalf of our commission today, we've already submitted you with our recommendations to support our equity interests. I am here to speak because of the work that we do as commissioners. And all of our work is volunteer and as you know, we've done hundreds of hours of volunteer work to talk with you as well as residents in the city of Minneapolis about our One Minneapolis program, which you know is a fund that is dedicated solely to people of color, to build on their leadership skills and political engagement in communities and also to be a part of the boards and commissions of the city of Minneapolis. So the fund that you are cutting is just that. You're cutting civic participation of residents, people of color who are not necessarily connected to neighborhood associations in our city, and I am disappointed that you're doing that. The work that we put before you is the work that you asked us to do. You asked us to evaluate and to look into the city of Minneapolis to find out where the disparities are with the leadership and participation of people of color, and that is what we did. And because of that, we presented you with a proposal budget that we think is necessary to support more efforts in this city to build the capacity of people of color to be involved, to create the solutions economically, socially, in our communities, and that is what we're doing. The evaluation that the NCR put before you is a tool that we are using not to evaluate what equity is. Equity is what we say it is. That is how you evaluate equity, is what we need and what we think. There is no clear definition outside of what the people think. But what we have before you is a tool that allows us to evaluate who sits on the boards of the neighborhood associations, which we know enlarge our Caucasian people, but we have to document it to be able to set standards of how many people of color need to participate. That is what you're cutting.
Ms. McKnight, your time is up.
I urge you to rethink about your priorities and values. We elected you people of color while you don't want to be the representatives because of color. We expect you to be champions of our economic and social inclusion in this city.
Ms. McKnight, your time is over. Thank you. Mr. Musa will be followed by Janario Taylor, number 61. Mr. Musa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Nassar Musa and I'm here tonight representing Oremo Community of Minnesota. I speak on behalf of Oremo Community because it is really important for us to speak on this issue. My community work a lot on so many social issues through partnership. I see the city of Minneapolis as a global city and I value that very deeply. But when, you know, you people cut the budget from very important areas, it disturbs me so much, really badly. And we really need you to protect and promote the value of One Minneapolis. I ask you to do that and I ask you to protect that budget. Please do not cut money from that program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Janario Taylor, number 61, and that is the last person that I have signed up. So if anyone else would care to speak, please see the city clerk and sign up to speak. Mr. Taylor?
My name's Janaro Taylor. Which one of these were?
Either one.
I'm Janaro Taylor from Minneapolis, a resident of Minneapolis. I'm directly involved with your decisions and how they affect people and the disparities on that end of things. I could get into numbers and all of that, but I'm here to just say, "Black Lives Matter." And when I say "black lives," you say "matter." Black lives.
Matter!
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 Black lives. Black lives.
Matter.
Black lives.
Matter.
And we're going to do this every time and everywhere and we're not going to stop until you people understand that we're all humans and this is a human issue. It started as a black issue, but it's a human issue and we all need to help and we all need to be together because we all have kids and people that we want a better future for. And if you can't understand that, you probably shouldn't be doing your job. You probably should resign. Black lives.
Matter.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. I have Zoe Holloman. Ms. Holloman?
It's Holloman.
Holloman, sorry.
Hi, my name is Zoe Holloman and I live at 3120 12th Avenue South. I work for a food justice organization, Appetite for Change, and they came and spoke earlier, but I'm speaking as a resident. I am not from Minneapolis. I moved here two years ago with my partner. And we heard all these things about Minneapolis, that it's super progressive and there's bike highways and all of these incredible things going on. And we're very excited to move here as a young black couple. And we're both organizers. And so when we came, we found a different situation. We found that, you know, the kind of progressive things that we had heard about Minneapolis in terms of making things accessible to everyone, it was not true. And we come from a city with a lot less development, a lot less jobs, and a lot less money. And so that was one of the things that we were excited about to see here. And with that much money, it just seems like it's not spread around very much. And so there's just, it's clear, it's become clear to us that there's a lot of work to do in equity and in racial and social justice. And also, I just wanted to say that, so I would say, you know, please don't cut funding to leadership development for communities of color. And also, I would just like to say that it's not very much money at all. Like, the money that we're talking about tonight is such a small amount that, you know, it's kind of sad that everybody here has to beg for something like that. And then I just want to say one more thing is, one of the social justice leaders that I work with always says, you know, don't pay attention to what people say, pay attention to what they do. So you've heard a lot of people talk about what they want the city to do. And so I guess we'll find out what you guys, who you are and what you stand for by what you do. Thank you.
Next, I have Elizabeth Oppenheimer, followed by Joel Martinez, it looks like. Ms. Oppenheimer is number 81, Mr. Martinez is number 82.
Thank you, council members. Liz Elizabeth Oppenheimer, 4225 41st Avenue South. A brief comment. I live with an African American man, young man. He is afraid to go out at night to take out the garbage. And so there is a real need to put this funding back into racial equity and all the other things that have been talked about, but that's a real situation with someone living with me. I yield the rest of my time to Joel Martinez.
Mr. Martinez.
Hi, my name is Joel Martinez. I live at 1619 Thomas Avenue North. I lived in North Minneapolis for the last 11 years. I voted for Mr. Blong Yang, my sitting councilman. I believe that racial equality is really important to our communities. The last eight months, I was in charge of the civic engagement campaign for the largest Latino organization that's close, Latino Community United Services. One of my biggest important things that I think that as a city, that we have to be, make sure that we are, that we hold up the budget, that it's not being cut by One Minneapolis. If you look at my record, my record is really clean. I have no felonies, but my record is failed to stop. That's to the lack of police accountability in North Minneapolis. I drive a 2012 Toyota Yaris. Every time I drive in North Minneapolis, I could pull over for one reason. First, is it my vehicle? Second, do I have insurance? First of all, do I have any, do I mean have a license? That's what One Minneapolis does. It holds accountability, does social justice in our communities, provides leadership. It's not a provincial program, provides opportunities to our people of color to do work in North Minneapolis, but people of color who are, there's lack of opportunities. And I encourage you to not cut the budget, but to reinforce it and to add more money to it. Even that, but to provide opportunities, more opportunities to our people of color, especially men of color, that we need in our communities. So I encourage you to do that, to not cut the budget, to embrace it and to stand what you voted for and what you ran your platform for. And Mr. Blong Yang, I voted for you and I expect that you do the right thing for your community members and for me because I voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. That is the last person that I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that would care to speak? Anyone else that would care to speak? Anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And we are going to recess the city council meeting for 15 minutes and the Board of Estimate and Taxation will do their business in this chambers while we are recessed. So it is 8:01. The city council will reconvene at 8:17. We'll give us one extra minute here, 8:17. So if you care to wait, that's fine. The Board of Estimate and Taxation will convene as soon as the council moves out. If that's all right? What? What?
Calling the Board of Estimate and Taxation together for their meeting. Jack, would you call the roll, please?
Becker. Mayor Hodges. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Quincy. Vice President Tab. President Wheeler.
Here. You know, I'm not sure I remember the Board of Estimate and Taxation getting that much applause in the past, so it's an unusual night. We're gathered here to have our meeting. Jack, we've got a number of pieces for new business, the adoption of our board budget for 2015 in the amount of $187,500. Is there further information you'd like to share at this point, Jack?
There's a suggested resolution in your packet.
Yes. Resolution, would somebody like to offer that? The motion has been moved and seconded for the maximum amount of $187,500. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say, are we going to do a roll call or? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. Second resolution is the adoption of the board's paid 2015 certified tax levy of $160,000.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Unanimous. Three, adoption of the Teachers Retirement Association pay for 2015 certified tax levy of $2,300,000.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Boy, you were just moving right along. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That also passes unanimously. And then part four here, Jack, could you give us a little bit more on that, please?
Yes. Item four is a request from the board to concur in the reallocation of bond proceeds from capital projects that are being closed out. It was passed on the council on December 5th. There's a total of $2,103,658 of net debt bonds that are being reallocated and $908,750.99 of sanitary sewer bonds that are being reallocated. The table provided, the capital projects indicated in green color are the ones providing the bond proceeds. The capital projects indicated in the tan color are the ones receiving the bond funds for completion of their projects.
The ones in tan are receiving. Okay, great. And this needs a motion?
Yes, it does.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Any discussion about this? We've done this in previous years, as I recall.
This is a normal occurrence with the capital projects. Capital projects are budget estimates at the time going into the projects. Some projects come in over budget slightly, some projects come under budget. This is, you know, leveling out and closing of the projects and reallocation of the funds.
Very, very good. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It's also passed unanimously. Now, five, sorry, I think, you know, when we got to 61, 62, 63, my brain started to move around a little bit. Do we have any direction to staff?
No.
Any further business? And we would entertain an opportunity to adjourn so that those who have been through this last meeting can at least have a few minutes prior to your reconvening.
I would move to adjourn.
It's been moved, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'm going to call this meeting, recess meeting of the Minneapolis City Council, to order. And I would ask you to be respectful of the business that we have to conduct this evening. And so a disturbance is going to prevent us from doing our business. And so I would ask that you be respectful and let us get our work done. Thank you. The first, let's see. It's 8:15, 8:17, and the council, I'm going to reconvene the council. We're in open session. We have a quorum present. For the members of the public, the city council will be conducting the rest of the meeting, their meeting in this chamber. The Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board of Commissioners is meeting in room 333, around the corner adjacent to the mayor's office, to conduct its meeting on the park boards 2015 budget. At this time, I hope everybody's signed in to the, or logged in. The council will take up consideration of the first item for action on the agenda, which is the proposed 2014 property tax levies payable in 2015. To do that, I will ask Councilmember Quincy to present the report of the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of the Budget Subcommittee, I'd like to move adoption of a resolution approving the 2014 property tax levies to be paid in 2015. And I'd like to continue, make an amendment to that motion, which would increase the general fund levy by $620,000 to a total of $1,054,723,000, and increasing the total levy for the various funds to $223,608,000, with the intent of using these additional levy resources to mitigate future levy increases by supplementing the property tax stabilization account.
Second.
Councilmember Goodman has a priority motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that the council is sitting as a full committee of the Budget Committee, the chair should be bringing forward the motion as passed by the full council. And the chair of Ways and Means is rightly able to amend his motion, but the motion that should be in front of us is the motion that passed by a majority of the full council.
Councilmember Goodman has made the point, and I agree with her, that what should be in front of us is the action of the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee, which is essentially a committee of the whole of the Minneapolis City Council and not a new motion. If we have a new motion, Councilmember Quincy, you need to get in, you are chair of the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee, you need to present the report that was approved by the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee. If you want to make an amendment, you need to get in line and make an amendment, but you need to present the report that came out of the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee.
I would agree, Council President, and that was my intent. Obviously, I made the main motion and I did continue in queue, which I believe was to be recognized for the amendment. I apologize if I've erred in protocol, but if I could speak to my amendment or if that could be seconded, I'd be happy to do that.
Second.
Councilmember Quincy, I'm going to rule that your motion is not in order. The report that should be in front of us is the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee report.
And I believe it is, Madam Chair. I'm happy to make that motion as I did.
Then I'm going to take the motion as a motion of the Budget Subcommittee, which is not your motion that is, that is the increase in the levy. Clerk, would you please give us that number?
Madam President, the motion submitted by the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee is in your packets, listed as number one. It's the resolution titled Approving the 2014 Property Tax Levies Payable in 2015 for the Various Funds of the City of Minneapolis for Which the City Council Levis Taxes. The total amount is $222,988,000.
Okay. So Councilmember Quincy, is that your motion?
That is my motion, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Warsami.
Thank you, President Bob Johnson. I would like to make a motion. This is a joint motion by Councilmember Yang and myself.
It's not in order to...
It's a priority motion as opposed to queue, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Warsami was in line. Councilmember Quincy made a motion. I ruled that was not in order. Councilmember Quincy amended his motion. Councilmember... Council member Quincy amended his motion. Council member Glidden was in line to second council member Quincy's motion. It's council member Worsami's floor right now.
Thank you very much, Council President. I would like to make a joint motion by myself and council member Yang, amending the resolution approving the 2014 property tax levies payable in 2015 for various funds of the city of Minneapolis for which the city council levies taxes by decreasing the general fund levy by $174,000 to a total of $153,929,000, and decreasing the total levy for the various funds to $222,814,000.
Is there a second? Council member Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I would like a ruling that that motion is out of order. It's not a priority motion. It's a regular motion. You get in queue, just like you were asking council member Quincy to do. And actually, council member Quincy was in queue. He had put himself in queue specifically to be able to, clerk didn't put him there. He put himself there to be able to make his amendment. I guess you are using your discretion as a chair, but I will say, the motion that was made, which is a proper motion, but it's not a priority motion. So if there needs to be a ruling on whether the motion that was made is a priority motion or not, then I would ask that that happens and, and ask for the city attorney's assistance in that ruling, please. And then I would be the next person, and I should not have my name crossed out, who is in line after council member Quincy under the original motion. As well, council member Worsami's name should not be crossed out, as he was recognized for his priority motion. I just want to make sure that we have the right protocol in this meeting where we have a lot of emotion. We want to make sure we get through our business and respect each other to the best extent possible. And I, and I, and I respect all my colleagues. I just want to make sure that we are really following the proper protocol. And I will look for the ruling.
Ms. Segal.
Madam President and council member Glidden, council member Worsami's motion is a motion to amend the main motion, and as such, is appropriate. My understanding from the clerk, I don't have speaker management on my screen, so my understanding from the clerk is that it was in the wrong place on speaker management.
No. Madam, okay. The, the question is not whether it's a proper motion. I think we all agree it's a proper motion. The question is whether it's a priority motion. I will say, if you kind of just look at the queue, and again, we're all trying to just make sure we have proper recognition of our ability to make motions and get an order, that I will just say I was in queue before he recognized, even if it was a mistake to put in the priority motion line. So I just would like proper recognition of our ability to make motions and follow proper protocol in this meeting.
Madam President, council member Glidden, it is not a priority motion.
Thank you.
But it is, it is a proper motion to amend.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Council member Worsami's motion to amend is in front of us. And that amendment is to amend the resolution approving the 2014 property tax levies payable in 2015 for various funds of the city of Minneapolis for which the city council levies taxes by decreasing the general fund levy by $174,000 to a total of $153,929,000, and decreasing the total levy for the various funds to $222,814,000. Council member Worsami, did you care, would you care to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am.
It is out of order.
It is not out of order. I have ruled that it's, the city attorney has confirmed that council member Worsami's amendment was properly made.
Thank you, Ms. President, but I would not speak to the motion as I said.
Council member Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to offer the motion that is in front of us. It will be a motion by Glidden to amend the motion to adopt the 2014 property tax levies payable in 2015 for the various funds of the city of Minneapolis for which the city council levies taxes by increasing the general fund levy by $620,000 to a total of $154,000, $154,723,000, and increasing the total levy for the various funds to $223,608,000, with the intent of using these additional levy resources to mitigate future levy increases by supplementing the property tax stabilization account. And I'd ask for a second, and if I get one, I would like to speak to this.
The council member Glidden's motion has been made and seconded. Go ahead, council member Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I can appreciate that we had, had a, I guess, a close vote at our, at our budget markup with council members looking for how they can think about property tax relief. This is a motion, and I want to thank council member Quincy, who was the, the architect of the ideas in this motion, which I think allows us to put funds into what has been created as the property tax stabilization account. This will create an ability to say that we have created property tax savings by the actions that are taken with this budget, without creating the decrease in this particular year's budget, which creates, I'll just say, a budget hole, a concerning budget hole that affects future years. So I'd urge my colleagues to support this. I think also this is a way to ensure that we are able to fully fund the items in the mayor's proposed budget, many of which have had a lot of conversation today. I think we'll have more opportunities to talk about those items in particular, but this is about how to create a solution. Again, I want to thank council member Quincy for identifying a way to strike what I think is a compromise that allows property tax savings to be created. Those would be realized in future years where frankly, we might need them the most. Thank you for the consideration.
Council member Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to speak obviously in, in favor of council vice president Glidden's motion to amend. I, I think I highlighted a lot of the conversation during the markup process, that the represent, what we're representing in our levy is relative, a small increase overall because of the last three years where we've had no increases. So much of the mayor's proposed budget was in fact for inflation and for making up those three years. And I think the best way to provide actual property tax relief is to preparing our, by preparing our budget for future years by having the property tax stabilization account enhanced with the additional savings. I think it's rewarding that we should be talking about property taxes and how it impacts our property owners across the city. But with the proposed budget, general fund for property taxes is actually going down, $2.37 million, or 1.5% from last year. That happens a lot because of what we call growth and what we're experiencing in our city. It's happening because of building permits, inspection fees, and other one times money, one-time monies that are running higher, but we don't think those are going to last forever. The budget was built on property tax relief targeting future years. The tax stabilization account that was used, was used to buy down property taxes as much as we could. Twenty cities in the metro area are proposing double-digit levy increases. The average in Minnesota levy is going up 4.6%. With the support and advice and counsel from our finance department, we're looking forward and concerned that the reduction that we're making will necessitate an even larger increases in the future. So this is what I consider the best way to mitigate those additional costs and would appreciate my colleague's support of my, or council vice president's levy increase.
Council member Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to speak in favor of this motion. I have the unique opportunity to represent a ward that has very wealthy homeowners, as well as some people who are living in very limited means. And I've been speaking with my constituents month after month, ever since this summer, as I go from neighborhood to neighborhood. And I can say that in my ward, which again, has very great economic diversity, there is broad support for us showing a long-term commitment to good financial policy. I was in some of my wealthiest neighborhood organizations just last week, talking to primarily homeowners who serve on their neighborhood boards, and explained why I did not support the original property tax levy decrease. Because, as council member Quincy said, we have deferred maintenance. Maybe he didn't say this. I will say this. We have deferred maintenance all over our city, in our parks and our roads, and those problems are only getting worse, not better. And so, this, I think, is, demonstrates extraordinary financial responsibility, that we are saying, we're not kicking the can down the road for the next year and the year after that. We are demonstrating that we care a lot about those, you know, really precious dollars from each of our constituents who pay property taxes, but we're doing it in a way that looks to future years, that demonstrates responsibility. I think this is a good compromise, and it shows that we, you know, are meeting in the middle here. So I think that this is a really great solution that I'm happy to support.
Any further discussion on council member Glidden's substitute levy increase? Seeing none, I'm going to ask my colleagues not to support this. I think that it is disingenuous to talk about increasing people's property taxes only to save them. We are not a bank. We shouldn't be taxing people any more than we need to run this city. This budget has much, many, many dollars of new spending. The dollars that we're quibbling about, I agree with many of our speakers today, are minuscule in the proportion of this budget. So I think that it, it is extremely disingenuous to tax people only to put the money in the bank. We are not a bank. I encourage my colleagues not to support this motion. Any further discussion on council member Glidden's substitute? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
No.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Fry.
No.
Paul Masano.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
President Johnson. No. There are six ayes and seven nays. That motion fails. Council member Worsami's amendment is in front of us. Amending the resolution approving the 2014 property, it's council member Yang and council member Worsami's mention, emotion, excuse me, amending the resolution approving the 2014 property tax levies payable in 2015 for various funds of the city of Minneapolis for which the city council levies taxes by decreasing the general fund levy by $174,000 to a total of $153,929,000, and decreasing the total levy for the various funds to $222,814,000. Council member Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am curious where the $174,000 is going to come from, because clearly it's going to have an impact on something. I would like to know what that is, and I think our colleagues deserve to know what that is before we take a vote.
Council member Johnson, I will ask either of the authors to answer that. Council member Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will have another motion a little bit later on this matter, but out of the two, the $174,000 is two positions from the communications department.
Thank you. Council member Gordon.
Thank you very much. I don't understand why we're not seeing in the motion then what we're taking the money out of, so that it's clear this is two communication people that would be hired to help do better outreach to communities, including to provide translation and try to do outreach to communities where English is a second language and where there's English barriers. And we're proposing to cut that. If, if we were listening, I think we heard that there were some concerns about equity in our city and about how well we're doing in those terms. And so, this is an initiative that, that I saw from the mayor's budget that I had some concerns about growing communications department and that, but I see these as very important positions connected to us improving the way that we interact and engage with the disenfranchised and underrepresented communities in our city. And I would not support reducing the levy further. Some of us on the council are already hurting pretty severely from the last meeting we had, where it seemed like our colleagues wanted to go after some of the things that were the dearest and most precious to us, some of the things that we'd worked eight years to build up enough support, so we thought that the city was ready to embrace them, and I think that it is. So let's not cut further and do more damage to, to the levy for more positions that are connected to those. I just, I just don't get it.
Council member Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to speak against this particular motion by Worsami and Yang, primarily because of what I know that these, this levy reduction is going to further take us in a hole that will be harder to make up in the future, especially when we're considering as part of this action, although we're talking just about the levy, what the action is actually going to be in the department budgets, is to reduce communications that we need for translation services. We know about our changing demography within the city. This is an important step forward in equity that was taken in the mayor's recommended budget, and it had gone through our markup process. And I don't think we've had the full discussion, discussion about the impact of these, these reductions, not from a levy point of view, or not from a just business practice point of view, about what I've heard from council members Worsami, to be an under-resourced area in our city already. So I believe that these cuts to the communications positions would be the wrong direction to take as policy. And from a tax policy point of view, further reduction on a levy that is well with, in the limits of inflationary costs and supported so many of our other projects enough that I believe we need to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Council member Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note that the chair of the One Minneapolis Fund testified today, as well as put in writing, that possible options for restoring funding to the One Minneapolis Fund could come from one of these positions. And I'll note that she writes, "While these positions may provide some multilingual work, that is not the focus of these positions." And so certainly, and it's in writing, it was passed out to us. And other council members had discussed this in the larger conversation a week and a half ago. I'll also note, many people on a variety of issues have had their dearest and most precious items underserved by this council. I don't think that the efforts to work out this budget are personal, and it's sad that some people seem to think that this is personal or a personal attack. I can say for one, I'm not out there on social media making personal attacks about votes, and I'm sorry if council member Gordon has taken this personally, but I think our attempt has been to try to find a place to fund the One Minneapolis Fund. And this was a suggestion that was made by someone who spoke today, and we're taking it.
Council member Connell.
Thank you, Ms. President. I am quite shocked to see this motion being put forward by the most diverse council that the city of Minneapolis has ever seen. My heart is racing right now. The poorest people in this city have come out to speak for equity. And what council member Yang and what council member Worsami are proposing is to once again, cut the levy. And where exactly would the motion authors get this money from? Please be specific. Cite your source. Clarify for the rest of us. Have some respect for your councilor colleagues. Explain the source of this money and help the public, the people that elected you to these positions, understand where this is coming from.
Council member Connell, our rules do not allow us to speak directly. You're supposed to speak through the chair. And I will answer the question. Council member Yang has already answered this question. There are two new communications positions funded in this budget on an ongoing basis, and those are the two positions that are recommended for the levy cut. Council member Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to speak directly to the community members who came here tonight. What I hear you saying is that... What I hear you saying is that you didn't support the original levy decrease, and you did not support us taking those precious dollars from equity, and this motion is doubling down. It is doubling down on exactly what you came here to fight, and I am sorry. I am sorry, and I want to say that this is not the end, that your voices matter, that it is powerful to have you here, and you have to come back, and come back again, and come back again, until the city council listens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask an open question. I want to understand, and I want to honor, yes, it's very powerful that you are all here tonight. I want to understand better what these communications positions are meant to be for. Are these truly just for multilingual resources? Because I know that we do that as a city in many ways. I am not one of the wards that has ever used a translator for a community meeting, but I offer it up for discussion for those who have. And so I'm just, I wonder that as I look at this budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to remind people that the action on this amendment will decrease the levy. That would take the funding away from resources that would be used to, as Councilmember Goodman illustrated, to be a funding source for other One Minneapolis Fund or whatever the commissioner was looking for. Those funds to be used in other sources as ways to fill other gaps would not be available to us if we take this action. Just wanted to clarify that.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the idea of my latte going from a grande to a vinte in size, but these communication positions are very important. I think everyone will agree, we should be doing a better job communicating as a city. In the budget presentations regarding these two positions, it says that these positions are enhancements to promote equity, make the city run better, and grow the city. They will provide more robust support to departments for strategic proactive communications work. They will boost collaboration with Neighborhood and Community Relations Department and multilanguage and community media outlets to ensure that city news and information reaches diverse communities across the city. They will better integrate multilanguage work into communication projects. Ultimately, it will support the goals of our city that this council passed, and this council says that they support. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Worsami's amendment on the levy decrease? Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to speak against this motion. I have to admit, you know, I agree with Councilmember Goodman. It's good not to personalize, but I'm just really sad. I don't know what else to say. As I was coming into this part of the meeting, I try not to be a very emotional person, I think, in these moments, but I just, you made me very emotional. And I just want to thank you very much for being here. It's important. It means a lot. No matter what happens with all our votes today, it means a lot. I would say it means a lot to every single one of us up here, no matter what happens with our votes today. But I disagree with this cut. I disagree with this choice. Again, I think kind of referring to what were recommendations from NCEC commissioners is kind of asking people about how are they, you know, trying to kind of scuttle around and stay alive with the One Minneapolis Fund. I don't know that that's really a fair question to ask, nor did they recommend cutting both of the positions, which is what is happening, is that we are zeroing out this opportunity to stay true to what I think has been our goal, is to really be a global city. We have global residents here. We are growing in how we want to be attractive to the world. We want to be welcoming to the world, and I think this is an important piece of that. How we're able to communicate, I think it's a big hole. I am requested for these kind of services all the time, all the time, and I know I do not have the ward that has the most people where English is a second language. So I disagree with these cuts, and we will take the vote.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Worsami's motion? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Bender.
No.
Glidden.
No.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Quincy.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Conno.
No.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
That motion is adopted. That motion carries, establishing the city's 2014 property tax levies. It's been adopted, payable in 2015. Next item on the agenda, second item, is the proposed 2015 general appropriation resolution for.
Madam President.
I'm sorry.
Madam President, the motion for number one has now been amended, and we need to vote on it as amended.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we need to vote on the main motion. You're right. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. We have Councilmember Worsami's amendment, which has changed the levy, is in front of us, so we will take a vote on the tax levy as amended. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
No.
Glidden.
No.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Quincy.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Conno.
No.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
The levy has been adopted. The second item on the agenda is the proposed 2015 general appropriation resolution for operating departments under the city council. Councilmember Quincy, will you present that report?
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the Budget Subcommittee, I would like to move adoption of a resolution establishing the operating budgets for departments under city council and fixing the maximum amounts to be expended by city departments in fiscal year 2015. I'd appreciate the opportunity to be recognized for an amendment to that motion.
Councilmember Quincy, I have someone in, you have moved the main motion, which is approving the general appropriation resolution. Is there a second?
Madam President.
Yes.
Doesn't require a second. It's a report from a committee.
Pardon me?
Report from a committee, not require a second.
Okay. That is in front of us. Councilmember Yang is in line for a motion. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion. The clerk has copies. This is a motion by myself and Councilmember Worsami. It's to amend the mayor's 2015 recommended budget as amended to, one, reduce the appropriation in the Communications Department by $174,000, and 2.0 FTEs, and reducing the general fund property tax revenues by $174,000, and, two, to utilize $250,000 in available one-time general fund resources to, A, reinstate the $150,000 to the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for the One Minneapolis Fund; B, to reinstate $75,000 for the City Coordinator Department for the Clean Energy Initiative; and, three, to allocate the remaining $25,000 to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department to reinstate a portion of the 2015 appropriation for homeownership counseling and outreach. And the third item is a staff direction for the Neighborhood and Community Relations staff to be directed to provide guidelines for expenditures of the consolidated TIF Fund for Neighborhood Revitalization purposes, using existing and previous policies, practices, and precedents, such as special uses like the Affordable Housing Commercial Quarter Reserve Fund. A key feature that should be included from past guidelines is the requirement for neighborhood review and sponsorship. The guidelines should be specific for the intended uses, be they special initiatives or large-scale activities, such as the large-track development activities. Staff is to present this recommendation to the council no later than May 31, 2015, and if I may speak on that.
Councilmember Yang has moved a motion by he and Councilmember Worsami, and you may speak to that, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to take a moment and walk through the content of these amendments for everyone in attendance. This motion uses $250,000 in one-time money that is unallocated in the city budget to reinstate some of the cuts that were voted on last week. There is $150,000 that goes to the One Minneapolis Fund. $75,000 will be restored to the Clean Energy Partnership. This fully funds the mayor's budget request. This motion also restores $25,000 to homeownership counseling and outreach. Keeping homeowners from foreclosure is important, and I hope to find new ways to support it in the future. Finally, this motion reduces the city communications department by cutting two proposed new full-time employees. These added employees are supposed to assist the NCR, or Neighborhood Community Relations Department, in assisting outreach to non-English language media. These positions duplicate work that is already being done in the city and can be done with existing city staff. And I want to say, you know, with NCR outreach specialists, there's an African-American specialist, there's a Spanish specialist, there's a Monge specialist, there's a Somali specialist, and there's an American Indian specialist. And I think that if we are to do our jobs well, we should be embedding a lot of the communications, communications work with regards to limited English proficiency communities to these positions right now. There have been many comments about equity in the city of Minneapolis and how this budget works or does not work on behalf of the poorest and most disadvantaged citizens we represent. I want to make explicitly clear to everyone that there is nothing that is more important to me than making my constituents' lives better. I represent some of the poorest, most diverse areas of the city, and equity to me is not a buzzword or a campaign promise. It's a fight that I have to take part in every single day for my neighbors to make them whole. And, you know, it's disappointing to see and hear folks talk about, you know, all these different things and yell names when we take important votes, but it's important for me to vocalize how important this is to me. Equity for me means that the people I represent have the resources to give them the economic power, educational power, and political power to be equal to the residents of better sections of this city. Equity means that the ward I represent is recognized for its economic vitality that exists within it. Equity means a whole lot more than $800,000, of which this cut is represented by the cuts we've discussed, which is less than .0007% of the Minneapolis budget. My values emphasize that we commit to the things that are important, to commit through money, through changing the way we have done things, and through our deeds. I share the priorities and goals we selected as a council. Although I may not always agree with all my colleagues on how best to achieve the goals, there should be no doubt that my votes today and my votes in the future will be doing right for the people in my ward. Thank you.
Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to echo some of the things that Councilmember Yang said. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came here today and who testified. And I would like to begin by saying that black lives do matter. The environment matters. As a black man, a Muslim, who spent his entire childhood as a refugee, someone who lived through and survived what Nelson Mandela stated as the moral genocide of his people, all the insidious, all the insidious. Like I said, somebody who grew up as a refugee, and I doubt, there are many in this room who grew up as a refugee, somebody who saw his people broken, somebody who was raised by a single mother on DSS, on welfare. I am insulted when some people try to second-guess something as difficult as understanding the budget and making some choices. I know, and I have struggled against racial discrimination, poverty, and violence. In the heat of the moment, it is easy to point fingers, to blame, and to label people as being against equity, being against myself, and my child, and my children, and my relatives. I am puzzled by the position of the various non-elected entities, which do very little to help, and yet try and monopolize the voices of the poor. What I fear most in all this argument about equity, that equity might just be a new fad, the new buzzword, the new diversity, another time-wasting exercise, and a promise with no substance. It is clear that to some, equity means that we hire professionals to do yet more research and case studies on the poor of our city. Yet to many, the lack of equity impacts their daily lives. As a Somali-American, as an East African-American, and as the first elected from that community, let me make my point, sir. As a Somali-American and the first elected, brother, you're not, you're not, you don't speak for that community. So let me make my point.
Sir.
As an East African-American community member, we have unique challenges and face great disparities in health, with the highest rates of child autism compared to any other community, with education, lack of, even, most of our community members don't speak English very well, lack of vocational skills, lack of housing, lack of employment, lack of public safety. Let me remind, for the record, over 20 young Somali-Americans were killed in the city of Minneapolis, and those homicides have not been resolved, and yet people are talking about, let's cut the money for public safety. When the police, when I speak to them, and I speak to the grieved family members, they tell me, we need more resources, Councilmember. Just like the rest of my colleagues, none of these decisions here that are made today about the allocation of public dollars are made lightly. They are made with the city's best interests, with our constituents' best interests, and they are made with the people's interests in mind. Now, I heard a lot of things. I haven't heard much from Ward Six members today, apart from the elders.
Ma'am?
Ma'am, let me, let me repeat. I haven't heard much from Ward Six members apart from those who came here to support Project Lookout. And I remind, and I don't want to point fingers at my colleagues, Project Lookout is something that we brought, me and Mr. Councilmember Yang, $55,000 to protect the most vulnerable, and some of our colleagues voted against it, and yet they want to vote for hiring professionals to do studies on us, and that's not acceptable. Now, just like the motion we made, we have refunded One Minneapolis. We have refunded the city, the Climate Action Plan. We have listened to you. All the things that you were talking about, we have refunded, and that's a fact. We're not dealing with rhetoric. We're not dealing with emotions. You came here, you spoke to us, we listened to you on social media, we got your emails, and every single recommendation that we made here, that me and Councilmember Yang made, were in response to what you told us. And we have refunded every single thing that was cut that you said was a priority. So that's a fact. So again, again, I, again, I mean, let's not move the goalposts here and there. There are two positions that we cut, right? Two positions, and we're told it's for micro seriously. So those two people who are going to be hired, they're going to be bilingual, they're going to speak Oromo, and Somali, and Spanish, and Moe, right? Both of them. What we want to make is the city, a city enterprise that's more efficient. We don't want to throw money at things, and then people tell us, look what you have done. Equity should not mean hiring professionals to do studies on us. The University of Minnesota has done enough studies of Cedar Riverside. They have bookshelves of the studies they've done. Let's get some of those books and implement those recommendations. That's my point, and that's the point of Councilmember Yang. So please, do not second-guess us, because it's an insulting thing that you tell me that you are more black than I am, that you care about black lives more than I do. It's insulting, and it's unacceptable, but we will listen to you, and we have listened to you. And the motion that we have in front of us here is a motion that directly responds to what you told us, and we have restored all the things that you told us tonight and through the media were important to you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to move a substitute motion. You should have it before you as a motion by Quincy. It is amending the mayor's 2015 recommended budget as amended to utilize $250,000 in available one-time general fund resources and reduce the appropriation for the Convention Center marketing enhancement by $200,000, to, one, reinstate the $75,000 to the City Coordinator Department for the Clean Energy Initiative; B, reinstate $150,000 to the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for the One Minneapolis Fund; and, three, provide $30,000 to the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for costs associated with Project Lookout previously directed to be funded from the One Minneapolis Fund; four, reinstate $125,000 to the Department of Community and Planning and Economic Development for homeownership support and foreclosure prevention; and reinstate $70,000 support and foreclosure prevention, and reinstate $70,000 for the City Coordinator Department to complete an evaluation of the city's neighborhood and community engagement system. And if I have a second, I would like to speak to the motion.
It's been moved in second. At Councilmember Gordon, go ahead.
Thank you very much. First, I do want to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Yang and Warsawami for their good work to try to bring us to some kind of consensus around some of these issues. I really appreciated the fact that they particularly called out in their motion, the $75,000, that's very, that's consistent with I'm moving forward for the Clean Energy Initiative, also recognizing the need for $150,000 to the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for One Minneapolis. Also, some funding for the Community Planning Economic Department for homeownership support. Their motion had it at $25,000, and this funds it fully to restore the cuts that it suffered a few days ago to $125,000. It shows me we're almost there, folks. And I think this is an opportunity that we have right now to recognize how we can make this a win-win for all of us. And this doesn't have to be some divided council who walks out of this room with bad feelings, but we can all be together. The substitute motion preserves and protects every single penny to public safety that the mayor put in the budget. We hold that increase, and it carries through with this. It preserves every speck of the property tax relief that we put in place. Some people out here wanted to put that into some fund for the future, and some wanted it in a levy reduction. If you support this motion, it's there for you. This doesn't touch the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at all. We've increased it. It's bigger. We have it there for us. That's a win. This initiative also preserves planning for some things that we care a lot about. All the money for the Upper Harbor Terminal is preserved in this. Nobody's touching it to get any of the funds back. The downtown activation funding, near and dear, and some of us, I know, made deep commitments to people that we wouldn't touch that funding. It's not touched here. All we're asking to do is use $250,000 that was unaccounted for, that was left over when we did the levy reduction, and take a little bit from that Convention Center enhancement. And then, we can reach out together, and you know that you can fund the Clean Energy Partnership that some of us care so deeply about, fully restore the homeownership support that we heard about tonight and that people care about. Also, we heard about the, we actually heard about an evaluation that people thought important, and I got letters about it, about our community engagement system. In fact, I think any significant improvement to that system needs a credible outside evaluator to come in and look at what's wrong with it and how we can improve it. And if you'll notice, I'm not talking about funding a new staff person, because I think the evaluation should come before that. So sorry, Mayor, but I'm not putting that on the line in this substitute, so maybe you don't get all the wins that everybody wants. But I'm serious. I don't see why we can't just come together and say, all right, we'll reach out and we will come up with a motion that we support. Later, we can come back and we can, we can vote if we want to about the Communications Department folks and the staff direction that you have at the end of the other motion. You can bring those back forward. But I just ask you to please consider supporting this. I will walk out then. In fact, I'll tell you this, I will probably vote for the whole budget, and I'll walk out here saying, I'm impressed and I'm proud of me and my colleagues because we were able to come together after a major divide, a publicly played-out divide, perhaps too publicly, but we came together with something that we all saw that we could support, and we acknowledged. Some things we supported just because our colleagues up here supported and care about it, and other things we supported because we care about it deeply. Let's join together in this one.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon, for bringing forward a motion that I agree is a very middle-of-the-road way to address what I think I've heard all of my colleagues say tonight, that the Energy Partnership is incredibly important to the city and that this council is in full agreement that we need to fully fund the Clean Energy Partnership. This restores the funding to One Minneapolis, to Project Lookout, to funds that go to keep people in their homes to prevent foreclosure, to build up the neighborhoods that are not seeing a property tax increase this year. But over time, as we help invest in all of our communities, we'll help all of our neighborhoods succeed. And again, the study, which I know is, you know, there's a lot of thoughts about this. There's been a lot of discussion about how to include the Audit Department better in this work, to reflect, you know, all of the great work that has been done restoring our city's audit function. So I've had a lot of discussions about this one. And, you know, I think here, this is a clear reflection of investing in our communities. The source that we are taking is either funding that, you know, again, as Councilmember Gordon said, was one-time resources that were left on the table. And then the other piece is an enhancement to what is already a very significant investment in the Convention Center. We spend tens of millions of dollars a year in this, and it is an important function, but this is, this was a, proposed to be a half-million-dollar enhancement to that function. This reduces it by $200,000. It puts the funding into things that are really important across our city, that are investments in a lot of different wards across the city. And I think that this, again, is a true reflection of what I have heard from the values of my colleagues.
Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Madam President. We're close to finishing up our first year as a new body of council members, and I'm sure that there will be many more interesting discussions down the road. I think what I would like to acknowledge at this moment, in support of this motion, is how hard some of our council colleagues have worked to find the middle ground, the compromise, which is symbolized by the motion that Councilmember Kim Gordon has put forward today. I have seen and heard of folks getting together over the weekend to discuss these matters and these issues. I have watched my own council colleagues walk up and down the hallways and meet with council members who disagreed on this previously. And that's the type of collegiality of walking into each other's offices to get each other's perspectives and ideas and concerns about the proposals that are coming forward that really reflect the true collaborative nature of a Minnesota grassroots, homegrown policymaking body. So I would like to encourage us to really look at this as a way to both support the levy cuts that have been made and to also support racial equity. And I think it is unfair, like somebody mentioned earlier, one of the audience members mentioned, that it's not fair to pit these two things against each other. And I don't think we have to. And I think that's what this proposal really demonstrates. I also want to remind us that this is also another way that we can show that the City Council and the mayor's office can work together on issues. Equity is one of our city goals. It is printed on those pieces of paper that we can all put in our back pocket and bring out during our neighborhood meetings, and it is one of the items that the mayor has prioritized. And I think we, as a council, should be able to also join in that vision. Many of us did, many of you do every day on the work that you do on affordable housing and many other issues. This isn't an either-or game. This is an "and," and together, we can do this. I think that a lot of folks really look at this motion that's being put forward as a good way to try to make sure that everyone can come out winning. And so oftentimes, in the policymaking debate, it's not about one side winning over the other, but it is about that middle ground that we're going to reach together through discussions and difficulties and moments of growing. So with that, I please encourage my colleagues to take this motion into consideration and to support it.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I reiterate what my colleagues have said about this motion. I think it's very solid, and, you know, we heard from a lot of people today on clean energy and on One Minneapolis, on those two particular items, which I think are incredibly important to fully fund. There are two other items in this motion which we have not heard nearly as much about, which is fully funding the homeownership support and foreclosure prevention program with what the mayor had recommended. In regards to that, I talked with one organization, for instance, that receives funding from this. They're just one of several. In the past four years, they were able to keep 458 homeowners in their homes across every single ward of this city that were facing foreclosure. And that's one of the several organizations doing that work. When it comes to the other item in here, the $70,000 for completing an evaluation of the city's Neighborhood and Community Engagement System, this is huge, because we have not done this yet since the NCR Department has been formed. And I know there are councilmembers who have asked, well, what does NCR fully do? How does it interrelate with NCEC? How can we be more effective with the $6 million-plus we put into this department and into our neighborhoods? And that's what this is about. This is about improving that efficiency, improving those relationships, and ultimately improving the outcomes that impact, again, every single ward in this city. So this is important. And when we talk about efficiencies, trying to make our city government more efficient, this is what we need in order to come back and say, here's the organizational changes that we should be making. Here's the process changes that we should be making. Here's how we can better utilize the existing funds that go to this department. And really, since the levy is set, the only question here, it seems, is the source coming from the Convention Center Marketing Enhancement. I know it was actually a subject in, in the Star Tribune, had reported on that particular topic. And there's no doubt that Meet Minneapolis has been able to have some huge wins for our city, including the Super Bowl and the NCAA coming to our city. They're currently funded at a little more than $24 million. And with that budget, they have been able to bring the biggest event really out there, the Super Bowl within the nation. And, and when I say $24 million, I mean for the Minneapolis Convention Center events program. I'll just clarify that. But they've been able to bring the Super Bowl here on that budget. So unless we're trying to bring the Olympics here, and I don't know about it, that seems like a sufficient budget to keep attracting really big events to our city and continuing to bring that economic activity. So I think it's absolutely fair that in comparison, we're talking about improving programs that are going to help homeowners across every single ward in this city, that are just going to be helping over our 70 neighborhood associations in improving the efficiency of departments, and, as every speaker has said here, virtually every speaker, clean energy, and as well, the One Minneapolis Fund, which is so important equity. So I fully support this, and I would urge my colleagues to as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's motion? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President. I first want to acknowledge, I think it was very important that we've taken the steps to use the easy money to find, the $250,000 of the unspent from the previous actions, to apply it to important things like the Great Energy Partnership that we've got going on. The Great Energy Program, I think, is a manifestation of that groundbreaking agreement with our utility companies, and is already being recognized nationwide as being innovative. And I'm pleased to see that that's included in this amendment. But Councilmember Gordon's motion goes further, because I think it, I want to point out that it has two phases in Councilmember Gordon's amendment that reinstates the $150,000 for the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for the One Minneapolis Fund. And then it goes and does the other $30,000 for Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for costs associated with the Project Lookout that we had previously directed to be funded from the One Minneapolis Fund. So that refills that hole. I think it was an important action we took to fund that Project Lookout, and I'm pleased to be able to do that. But this, this particular motion as presented fills that $30,000 gap. And then it goes further, because it reinstates the $125,000 to the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development for the homeownership support and foreclosure prevention. That work, as Councilmember Johnson eloquently pointed out, is not a long time ago when foreclosures were a big problem in our city in this economic downturn, that the city of Minneapolis was most resilient on and demonstrated our success by pulling together and working on ways to help people stay in their homes. Vacant homes continue to be a big problem, especially in North Minneapolis. The additional funding to use the enhancement of the $500,000, $100,000 was used in the previous action to reduce the levy, and that the additional $200,000 taken from this resource is a simple, low-cost, non-threatening to the structured budget that the mayor presented in the first place. So we're able to do a lot of things with the One Minneapolis Fund, the Clean Energy Program, the homeownership support and foreclosure prevention work, and the systematic evaluation of our neighborhood and community engagement system, which we all know is overdue. That's what's available in this motion, as Councilmember Gordon has presented. And I think it reinstates some of the cuts in an easy, low-impact way by taking the EZ 250, and then it goes a little bit further in looking what the funds are available in the Minneapolis and Convention Center marketing programs on an enhancement. It doesn't do any damage to the base contract, and that's important to realize. We know the importance of downtown Minneapolis. As a result, look at all the jobs that are created, all the jobs that are sustained, and all the opportunities that arise because of the great work that the Convention Center performs and our Meet Minneapolis sales staff does to attract that business. That's what generates the revenues. That's what generates the sales taxes. I'm loathe to absolutely use that as a resource, but in this particular case, as we address the equity issues that are presented in these other programs, it's a no-brainer for me, and I would encourage my colleagues to support the Gordon substitute motion, and look forward to a continued spirited debate on the topic.
Excuse me, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll happily be the only potentially person to speak out loud about why I think this is a bad idea and urge your no vote. As the Chair of the City's Community Development Committee, I know more than anyone else the importance of homeowner foreclosure prevention. I work on this and have done so for 17 years. There is $260,000 in unspent money in that contract right now. So I would urge us to figure out a way to spend that money. Thankfully, the number of foreclosures in the city has declined. In fact, it's following a national trend, and that is a really positive thing. We told the Arts Commission, they had unspent money, spend that before we give you new money. We told Great Streets, which is an amazing program on commercial corridors in our neighborhoods, you had unspent money, spend that money. This is the exact same thing. Councilmember Warsawami's motion puts a little bit more money in now, but this isn't going to prevent any of these organizations from doing their work because they have unspent money already. As for the reinstatement of the money for the evaluation of the Neighborhood and Community Engagement System, I would say this is probably an area where there's a lot of agreement on the council that we need to figure out what they're doing. I guess I would say, when you have $16 million sitting in a fund called NRP, not spent and not allocated, you think we could find $70,000 within that group in order to do this study? And in fact, doing a study of these neighborhoods and their money would be a perfectly legitimate use for this money, and I don't think a council action through the budget would even be required. This is probably something we can negotiate with NRP. These folks want this evaluation in order to prove that the program was a large success. $16 million unspent says something about equity in our city when it's sitting in account and not being spent on things that deal with racial and social justice issues. So I'd urge a no vote on this amendment and a yes vote, which will preserve the money for the Clean Energy Initiative and 100% of the money for the NCR Department's One Minneapolis Fund.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak to the specific, the homeownership program and the foreclosure counseling. I was actually very surprised to see it in the original package, and so I reached out to staff just to learn more about the program. I will say it's not something that's used a lot in my ward, but I think it's really important for the city as a whole. And so my understanding from staff, and I believe staff has shared this with a number of councilmembers here, is that there is not funding left over for next year, that the billing cycle for this program is a reimbursement program, so the community organizations that we fund to do this work have not requested reimbursement for the city for 2014. That is why it shows a fund balance, but that this work, I believe, another councilmember told me that August is the latest that this, maybe that councilmember can verify, this program would continue.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I also wanted to speak to the homeownership support and foreclosure prevention piece of this motion. And this really is, in my mind, the most significant piece that is different in terms of restoring funding. I do appreciate that the other motion restored the funding to the Clean Energy Partnership. We'll talk more about that, I'm sure. I'm also appreciative of restoring the funding to the One Minneapolis Fund. But this piece, and I do want to respectfully disagree perhaps on the description... But this piece, and I do want to respectfully disagree perhaps on the description of where the funding is at. We actually received in our offices after our budget markup, letters from three, I would just say, very respected organizations that are vendors of these services. Received a letter from the Homeownership Center, from Habitat, which is also a vendor of these services, and from the Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers, which is the umbrella organization for also several vendors that work on these services. The services are actually two in part. One is the services that have been offered in the city for many years at varying amounts, which is counseling support, which is about preventing foreclosure. And these are vendors that have a track record of successful outcomes. This has been very valuable funding, and there is still a need for the funding. There's a second piece, though, that is funding, which is a new piece. So there is a new piece. It is called outreach, and it is the turning the corner of work that is very needed in our city to grow homeownership in communities of color. We have not had a program that was targeted to grow homeownership in communities of color, well, for as long as I can remember. I did ask the staff about this, and they said that there has not been a program of this type for a significant amount of time. Let me tell you, it's time. So this is why I strongly feel that this funding is very important to restore. There is a different cycle for accounting within these organizations. It has a bit to do with how the city bills, you know? We do the budget, and then it takes all this time, you know, to get things done. Well, it shouldn't be our fault that then we are preventing how this funding gets utilized. They need to be able to have the proper staff to offer the services that we're asking them to offer by having this contract. So I do feel that these are very important funds. They are very utilized by the community. They're needed in our community right now, and we shouldn't give this, cut these funds.
Councilmember Worsami?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, again, reiterate that we are restoring the $75,000 for the Clean Energy Initiative, the Yang Worsami motion. We are restoring the money for the One Minneapolis Fund, and we are putting $25,000 to the, for the...
Vote yes! 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 Vote yes!
Yes, I would like you to vote yes on the Yang Worsami motion. Now, there's 200,000, there's $200,000 that are somehow being taken from the Convention Center. And since we're talking about equity, and Councilmember Quincy seems to be very generous, I would like that $200,000 to go to a youth development program in Cedar Riverside. So that's my suggestion. Thank you. Instead of this program that already has funding. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Madam President. And I would actually, I might support something for youth development, and I think that we could come back after this passes, and we could even look at how we funded some of the things you wanted to fund in your original motion. And we might even have some extra money because we didn't use the, some of the sources that you wanted, like the 175. But don't forget, the Convention Center Meet Minneapolis Enhancement was larger than 200,000. So please have your staff prepare some future motions, so maybe we can look at how we could use it there. Mostly, all I wanted to point out, I guess, is that, for those of you who don't know, I'm not in the majority party. And I've been here a while, and I learned early on that compromising isn't all bad. And in fact, I've gotten criticized by some of the most strident people out there that, why do I spend so much time trying to work cooperatively with all of the colleagues on the council? And I absolutely want to be able to work cooperatively with every single one of you. And I think those of you that have been around a while probably think I have. I mean, we've had our differences, but I think we've probably worked together on various issues. And I think our own staff back there notices. And boy, it's better when our aides are working cooperatively together, I'll tell you that. And I bet you that the city department heads notice. And when the city department heads see the council working together for common goals and charging ahead united, I bet it helps them work together better, united and charging ahead. And I bet you their staff noticed too. And I think the people in the city notice too. And when they think that, oh, these people have dramatic differences, they disagree and they have trouble. But then they sit down and they work on it, and they hash it out, and they can come together and end up walking out with something that works for all of them. And then probably, if it works for all of us, it works better for our staff, and it works better for the people of the city. And that's what I learned, is why you compromise. You don't just compromise to compromise, but you actually compromise because you realize you don't have all the answers. You don't really know everything. You don't see it from all the angles. So I listen to you guys. I talk to you guys. I pay attention to what you need and what you think the city needs, and I work to reach over and find the common ground. Now, we're going to have, God willing, I guess, there isn't a catastrophe or something, three more budgets to get through after this. We're starting out together now. Let's have our first budget, something that we all embrace, that we can all proudly vote 13-0, that we can all proudly say, I took some hits, I gave up on some things, but I got what I needed to feel like we can go forward. And I really think, if you set aside that 7-6 divide we created a few days ago, that this has it with all the other actions we've taken.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's motion? Singun, I'm going to speak. I actually had a conversation yesterday with Julie Gugan, who is the Director of the Homeownership Center. And as has been stated before, as of yesterday, she told me, they have a balance right now on their books of $200,000 from their 2014 allocation. Now, there was a problem with their 2014 allocation because they didn't actually get the money from the city until October. And that is a problem that we can fix, and we have a meeting scheduled with Ms. Gugan and our finance staff the free week, which I'm coming in for, to try and address that problem. Nobody should have to wait for 10 months to get their city funding. If we pass the original motion, not this motion, but the original motion, we will be sending $275,000 additional dollars to the Homeownership Center in 2015. $275,000 additional in 2015. Now, that is money that they can use for foreclosure prevention, which has all of us know. I live in the ward. I represent the ward that has the most foreclosures in the city. There were months that I would have 50, 60 foreclosures in my ward. Those numbers have declined dramatically. The workload has declined. And now the initiative is to get people into homeownership. I support this. That's what my neighbors are asking for. They want homeowners. They want people to come back to fill these vacant homes. It is a great initiative. Now, if Homeownership Center spends the $200,000 that they have existing, the $275,000 additional dollars that we are sending to them, if they spend that by May, by June, they will come back to us. We can ask for an amendment to the contract and fund them more. But it seems to me this is a reasonable outcome. This is a reasonable way to go. They are getting a substantial amount of money with this original motion, not the second motion. So I will encourage my colleagues. We have restored the funding to One Minneapolis Fund. We have restored the funding to the Clean Energy Partnership. The Convention Center Fund is a fund that allows us to get taxpayer money, tax money, excuse me, from people that visit our city. They don't put, they come to visit us for a convention or for an event. They do not put children in our, put any children in our schools. They don't call the police usually. They don't have fires, all those kinds of things that we have to provide services for. These people just come to our community and spend money. When we had the Garth Brooks concert at the Target Center, I forget how many concerts he did, I took my calculator out and I figured out just exactly, not exactly, but close, how much entertainment tax the city of Minneapolis was going to get because of those concerts. And it was a half million dollars. I may be off some, but a half million dollars. Our finance staff told us that in August of this year, because we had the most successful convention year that we have ever had in the city's history, in August, we had an extra million dollars of sales tax receipts in our downtown for the taxes that the Convention Center lives off of, that we all live off of. The excess comes to the general fund, and then that is used to reduce the need for property taxes. So it may be, they're asking for an enhancement. They want to continue this good work. We've already taken $100,000 away from the base motion. If we view this Meet Minneapolis and Convention Center Fund as a fund to fund everything that everybody wishes and make everybody happy, we will be killing the goose that laid the golden egg. And that is a huge mistake for us as a city. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote no on this motion. Clerk will call the roll.
No.
Bender?
Hi.
Glidden?
Hi.
Yang?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
No.
Goodman?
No.
Fry?
No.
Paul Masano?
No.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
No.
There are six ayes and seven nays.
That amendment fails. The appropriation, general appropriation resolution by Councilmember Yang and Worsami is...
Next, thank you.
I'm sorry. The Councilmember Yang amendment to the recommended budget is in front of us.
Don't cut equity, cut the convention. 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 Don't cut equity, cut the convention.
I'm asking, I'm asking you to please let us do our business. If we can't do our business, we'll have to recess and come back. So please let us do our business. Councilmember Yang's motion, Yang and Worsami's motion to amend the recommended budget is in front of us. Any further discussion on that motion? Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I would like to move to separate the motion, and I would recommend doing it as such. Item 1 remains 1. Item 2A is 2. Item 2B is 3. Item 2C is 4. And item 3 is 5, so that we can separate and have an opportunity to vote on these items.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Glidden. So item 1 is 1.
Item 1 remains 1.
Okay, 2 is 2.
2A, because I think all these kind of, these are separate appropriations and the 2, so I think we should have the ability to vote on those separately. And then that makes item number 3 into number 5. That makes sense to everyone?
Yes. Does everyone? Okay. All right. All right. Any further discussion then? Councilmember Glidden has moved to separate these items, so they're separated in front of us. Councilmember Fry?
Aren't we done on my separation?
Thank you. I'm happy to speak now. I believe Andrew, Councilmember Johnson is in front of me.
I'm sorry, somebody's talking to me. Councilmember Fry?
Councilmember Johnson, are you, oh, I apologize. So this, this last week here has filled me with a ton of hope and also a ton of frustration. Hope in that we clearly have a load of happy, smiling warriors that are ready to fight for equity, to tackle our opportunity gap head-on, to come out and rally and speak their minds. That gives me so much hope, so much pride in our communities, and it's got to make every single one of you feel great. I also have a lot of frustration. I have a lot of frustration because I think at times we're missing the ball. I think at times that we are pushing for initiatives that are not going to dramatically move the ball forward, whether it's an additional couple of staff positions which may do some good, whether it's doling out $150,000 in $10,000 increments which also will do good, or whether it's talking about funding a year of a disparity study, all of which do a lot of good. My biggest concern, though, is that they don't, they don't substantially move the ball. We live in an amazing city, but that city is not necessarily amazing for everyone, especially communities of color. Every single person on the council recognizes and acknowledges this truth. The mayor, I know, recognizes and acknowledges this truth. But we all have different strategies in arriving at the desired outcomes of eliminating this opportunity gap. For me, the strategy in getting there, and I say this 10 or 15 times a day, is desegregation through affordable housing in middle and upper-income areas. We are a diverse city. As represented by the people here today, we are still extremely segregated. To stereotype, we've got a Somali population in Cedar Riverside. We've got a black population in North Minneapolis. We have a Latino population in South, Polish in Northeast. You know, I believe that we will truly succeed when we are all living amongst people that don't look just like ourselves. And what that means is affordable housing in middle and upper-income areas. So the initiative that I poured my heart into, and others, and I would also like to thank Councilmember Quincy as well as Sandy Christensen for their work on this, was to increase the Affordable Housing Trust Fund by $4 million. We got a unanimous support from the city council, which is, at that funding level, is something that I believe is unprecedented. And for the very first time, we surpassed, the very first time in recent history, we surpassed the $10 million mark in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is big work. And if it seems like I'm really proud of it, it's because I am. I am proud of it, and it can't be undermined. This is work that puts people, takes people from homelessness and gives them a route to succeed. This puts a roof over people's heads. This gives people the mechanism to provide not just for themselves, but their entire families. This does a lot of good. Now, some of you may not agree with me that this is the right strategy to fight our opportunity gap, and I respect the difference of opinion entirely because, you know, we all have different ways of arriving at the great city that we all know we can achieve. But a difference of opinion on how to tackle our racial disparities, and clearly there is one here, shouldn't put us at odds with one another when we should all be working together, when we all must be working together, because that's absolutely crucial. You know, in the last week here, I've had a lot of very nice things that have been said to me, and I've had a lot of very mean things that have been said to me. You know, I've been called a racist expletive. I've been called a white homophobic expletive and a whole bunch of other stuff that probably aren't even appropriate for city council chambers. And you know, I'll take every bit of it. I signed up for this job. But we can't undermine the work that a lot of people are doing. And it's some really good work. The work that we have now funded through One Minneapolis at $150,000, the full funding, which is what was asked for. You guys tweeted, you Facebooked, you emailed, you called. Some of my closest friends said, you know what? We need that One Minneapolis funding. Now, admittedly, while it will do some good, I don't think that it will reshape the way that Minneapolis has existed for now decades. I don't. And I hope that it will move the ball. We restored the energy position which other people asked for. We did that. So while I was initially tentative, very tentative, to support programs that are not going to have systematic change immediately, I am so hopeful that they will have systematic change down the road and through a lot of time and effort from all of you. This weighs, this whole decision has weighed heavily on my heart throughout, and I'm sure it's weighed heavily on my fellow council members. Needless to say, it's been a rough time in City Hall. Guys, we got to work together on this. We know there's a problem. There's an obvious problem. But we can't let our differences in the strategy undermine the overall effort. I'll be voting yes on this. I'll be voting yes on this.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I believe what's before us now is just the separated motion, number one, from the Yang and Worsami motion, which is to reduce the appropriation in the Communications Department by $174,000 and eliminate two full-time positions, reducing the general fund property tax revenues. Well, we've already reduced the general property tax revenues by 174, and those of you who have been paying very, very careful attention, finance staff, for example, will realize that this now is how we're going to decide where to get that. So now, again, we could take this from other sources, and I think we should. So I think we shouldn't approve taking it necessarily from the Communications Department at this time. I think that there's other places where we could take this revenue, so we can vote this down, and we can think about where else we might be able to take that from. I know that, to his credit, Councilmember Quincy, who I consider the strongest advocate for preserving the Convention Center and Meet Minneapolis Fund, and we all value Meet Minneapolis, and we all want them to be successful in the Convention Center, and you know who I'm looking at, so don't take it personally, but he was willing to do that, so maybe that's another source where we could go to redo some of these fundings if we have to. I know that those are a one-time issue, but we could resolve that next year. But I won't be supporting this, and I just want to be clear that this is to remove those two positions from the Communications Department.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to restate what these positions are described to do. These positions are for cultural media relationships, to strengthen relationships with cultural media outlets, in order to provide city messaging through non-English-speaking media outlets. The FTEs will work closely with neighborhood newspapers to improve our ability to garner earned media on city messages in places, in newspapers that are outside of the mainstream media. It is for multi-language video production, to expand the production and distribution of multi-language videos, to reach those who prefer to receive information in a language other than English or orally. It is for strategic communications for reaching underrepresented communities, to partner with NCR to help city departments on strategies for reaching underrepresented communities with key city information, such as snow emergency, street sweeping, budget process, fire safety, and police information. It's for coordinating with NCR and translated content distribution. It is for accessibility on the city's website, to translate content throughout and make it easier to find. I will not be supporting these positions. I do not understand any argument that says cutting these positions supports equity.
Any further discussion on item one from the Yang and Worsami motion, which is reducing the appropriation in the Communications Department by $174,000 and reducing the... Well, we've already reduced the general fund property taxes by 174, so it's actually reducing appropriations in the Communications Department by 174 and two FTEs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
No.
Glidden.
No.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Quincy.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
No.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
That item is adopted. Next, we have number two, which is 2 and A, utilize $250,000 in available one-time general fund resources to reinstate $150,000 to the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for the One Minneapolis Fund. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate this, but I just did want to be clear that $150 does not reinstate the cuts that were made the other day. It's $180 that would reinstate...
$180,000.
I'm sorry, $180,000.
Slate.
Small change for us, I guess, at this point. $180,000 would reinstate it, and you've come in $30,000 short of the full reinstatement. So when people talk about we've reinstated the One Minneapolis Fund, this isn't doing it to the full capacity as we had it before us in the mayor's recommended budget. I would certainly be open to making a friendly amendment. I don't have one written or prepared, but I think it might be perfectly reasonable if the authors were willing, or I had some time to amend it, perhaps we could add $30,000 from the Convention Center Fund so we could actually make the One Minneapolis Fund whole.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and I might just suggest to my colleague that since we're too deep in here, you probably have to bring in a separate motion, which you do have time to do. But I appreciate Councilmember Gordon's comments. This isn't quite the full funding. I will say, though, it does come, it is a substantial amount of what was the funding. I do appreciate that this was an item that, again, we heard a lot of community comment on, on the value of this, on the lack of other opportunities or investment by the city in growing leadership in communities of color, and this is one way that NCEC has taken that direction and crafted a program that would anticipate that if it does continue, and this is a way for it to continue, we'll continue to get more and more sophisticated and better reaching into achieving those goals. So I certainly will be supporting this. Again, I am happy to see this item in the motion that has come forward, and thank the authors for that.
Councilmember Worsami?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, $150,000 is going to go to One Minneapolis Fund. The $30,000 that was taken from there has been earmarked to go to Project Lookout, which helps tenants of the Minneapolis Public High Rises. Most of them are elderly, a lot of them are disabled, mental and physical disabilities. We have 40% are East African. You have a lot of Hispanics living there. This is one of the main equity money that goes directly to the poor that was put into this budget. So again, people want to move the goalposts, they want to move things around, you know, that's one thing, but again, I don't support this. I think as it is, the Yang-Worsami motion addresses the issue at hand.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first, I wanted to point out that the amount of money that was allocated to Project Lookout wasn't solely the 30,000. I believe it was 62,000. Some of the 62,000 initially came, I'm sorry, 65,000, 55,000, my apologies, 55,000, 25,000 of which came out of the staff, and then the other 30,000 coming out of the ultimate 62. I'm sorry, of the other 62. And the importance of this 30,000, which detracts from the 180,000 that was initially in the One Minneapolis Fund, I think it matters. Just the other day, I went to meet with many of the public housing residents over at 314 Hennepin, and, you know, this, one, it helps their safety, two, it helps their community engagement, it helps them feel, you know, safe in their homes when at times they don't. This is, I mean, public housing is about a progressive, I think, a measure as we can take, and I am very, very supportive of it.
Councilmember Kano?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify that the motion that passed to allocate $55,000 to Project Lookout, that was moved by Councilmember Blang Yang and Councilmember Abdi Worsami, did indeed take 30,000 from the One Minneapolis Fund, as well as indicate that the rest should come from year-end savings, and I just wanted to let you know that I talked to the city staff, and there will be no year-end savings.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Yang and Worsami's amendment, number two, to reinstate $150,000 to the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for the One Minneapolis Fund? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to speak in favor of this amendment, so I think we should be voting yes for this, by the way. Councilmember Worsami may have misspoke a few moments ago, as we separated the items. But I do want to clarify that the original intent of the One Minneapolis Fund in the mayor's recommended budget included the $62,000 for One Minneapolis, which was the same as the previous year, and then enhanced it with the additional $150,000. I hope that's correct. Yes, right. So what happened when we did the Project Lookout, which I absolutely support, we took $30,000 from the 62, thank you, and so that created a gap of $180,000 to One Minneapolis Fund, not $150,000. So I just, I absolutely support this. I'm going to take another run and see if we can get the additional $30,000 backfilled with another source, but my intent is to support this amendment and look forward to another amendment.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Yang and Worsami's amendment, number two, to reinstate $150,000 to the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department for the One Minneapolis Fund? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted. Next, we have item three, which is B, reinstate $75,000 for the City Coordinator Department for the Clean Energy Initiative. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and first I want to say thank you to so many people for speaking on this issue. I think it was probably one of the ones that generated some of the largest amount of comment, and then I really feel happy that the themes of how this also supports racial equity were part of the message that I heard from so many people. I have to admit, I was really confused when this was cut, in part because it actually didn't affect the tax levy. So it's one-time funds. This is the way that was recommended, both from the Energy Pathway Study and the Clean Energy Partnership, to give this initiative the right and proper start that it deserves. A lot of energy has gone into this, and we hope that this then can be right-sized to what is the proper amount of investment in an ongoing basis. So I just personally want to say thank you to the authors of, again, finding a compromise, of restoring the funding to the full amount for this really critical partnership. I think this is something, again, we all voted for this, I think we all can be very proud of this. I think we need to send the right signals on here. I'm very glad we're restoring this funding. So thank you to everyone.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was a position that I initially voted against during the initial budget markup, and the reason was that if you are able to do all of the responsibilities required of this position off of existing staffing, obviously there's not the need to hire another person. In this case, I was wrong. You know, I don't think that we'll be able to do that existing staffing, so I'm thankful that we actually have the opportunity to rectify this, and I'm happy to support this motion.
Any further discussion on the Yang-Worsami motion, three? Reinstate $75,000 for the City Coordinator Department for the Clean Energy Initiative. Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted. Next item is number four, C, allocate the remaining $25,000 to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department to reinstate a portion of the 2015 appropriation for homeownership counseling and outreach. Any discussion on that, number four? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted. And next, we have number five, really number three, add the following staff direction. Neighborhood and Community Relations staff is directed to provide guidelines for expenditures from the Consolidated TIF Fund for neighborhood revitalization purposes, using existing and previous policies, practices, and precedents, such as special uses like the Affordable Housing Commercial Corridor Reserve Fund. A key feature that should be included from past guidelines is the requirement for neighborhood review and sponsorship. The guidelines should be specific for the intended uses, be they special initiatives or larger-scale activities, such as large-scale, large-track development activities. Staff is to present this recommendation to the council no later than May 31, 2015. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I realize that Councilmember Yang and Worsami aren't on the committee that oversees the community engagement, so I could understand maybe why they weren't aware of all the work that we were already doing in this area. And I know that in the making budget amendments and everything, we get busy, and sometimes we don't always go to the committee chairs or any of the committee members to vet some of our ideas, and I can appreciate that, too. But it seems like you're missing the fact that we've already directed our Neighborhood Community Engagement Commission and our staff to work on the issue of the TIF funding and the guidelines, and we have them already coming back to make a report. I think probably what the really appropriate thing would be to do is try to ask staff to incorporate this idea of using the TIF money for affordable housing ideas and creating commercial corridor funds offline, and do that, or maybe even work through the committee, and we could see that we could do that, but I'm sure it's something that they can look at and analyze, and I don't think that we need a budget staff direction like this. In fact, I think it might give the wrong impression to the commission and to the neighborhoods. So I would respectfully request that we don't pass this now, but we come back and look at how we can do this as part of a bigger picture and bigger priorities and the larger discussion that we're going to have about tax increment financing in the neighborhoods, hopefully after we've had an outside evaluation done, so we can really see how our community engagement system is doing.
Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Gordon, apologies to you if it's redundant, you know, I would imagine, I mean, in these situations, there's a lot of moving parts, and, you know, I certainly wanted to defer to you on that, but, you know, as this thing kept on going, you know, we just didn't have time for that, and so that's why it was put in here. You know, I would just suggest that, you know, if it's redundant, I mean, both of them can be read together, and we can just have, you know, a new direction that just, you know, allows for everything we want, instead of just, you know, killing this and, you know, doing exactly what you've talked about, which is that you've done this in your committee. I mean, if you've done this in your committee, and, you know, we have this, I mean, it just kind of adds to what we can do.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam President. And Councilmember Gordon, this was the specific general direction that was given in your committee in mind. Actually, I did do a little research, because questions have been coming to me quite frequently and with increased frequency as these conversations move forward, to the appropriateness of having set-aside funds that the community groups often think is money that are rightfully theirs for special initiatives. And these special initiatives are not waiting for a special study or report or anything. They're moving forward. There are allocations that use these funds for special, large-track development initiatives, et cetera. And so this was just to give some past guidance on very analogous activities when these conflicts arose. This doesn't say what to do, it just says, here are some guidelines from the past, incorporate them in your current investigations, and Mr. Reberter said, as a matter of fact, this language came from him, so that's consistent with that. So it was basically put on a finer point to people who had more specific questions, even in light of your general direction, which was very welcome.
Councilmember Glidden?
Just a moment, I will be in time. Okay. I will say, usually I think we give a lot of discretion to doing staff directions, but this is some, I will say again, nobody talked to me about what's the actual need. I came and talked to virtually every single council member about ideas that were being floated around about this budget. Nobody told me about, frankly, a staff direction that doesn't have impact on our decisions on the actual expenditures at all, so I'm kind of... on the actual expenditures at all, so I'm kind of confused about that, especially when I just spoke with Councilmember Yang about encouraging Councilmember Gordon not to bring staff directions to this body when they should go through his committee. And I supported Councilmember Yang, just as a point of what I thought was personal courtesy, that staff directions that affect the work of committees that really deserve that discussion, is this the right framing to the direction, go through the committee. And that's why I feel a little bit confused about this. Normally, the staff directions, frankly, aren't that big a deal. And so, you know, I just, again, I'm kind of confused about why that's the case. I think this is an easy one to, I don't, we are supposed to bring motions in writing, otherwise, I would frankly move that we direct this for discussion to the committee. Maybe that is a point, since Councilmember Yang isn't on the committee, he wants to be part of the discussion. I don't want to exclude him from that. But anyway, that's a little bit of my, just, I guess, perhaps, personal point of question to Councilmember Yang's. Again, usually, these are not controversial. They, we give a lot of discretion to staff, staff directions, and this is why I'm a little bit confused, why this wasn't brought up as kind of a courtesy, especially when he and I just had this discussion about keeping committee work out of this meeting.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. And I realize I've asked for some pretty big things today, but I think I'll just ask for a small thing now, and move to refer this to HECE Committee for consideration. Do I need a second for that?
Second.
Councilmember Gordon has moved to refer Item Five, Previous Three, to the HECE Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. So with that, we've dispensed with the amending of the General Appropriation Resolution by Councilmember Yang and Worsami. And those items have been moved to the General Appropriation Resolution as amended. And people are in line to speak to that. First person in line is Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move an amendment to the General Appropriation Resolution. I'm passing it out now. This should be to reduce the allocation to the Convention Center Marketing Fund by 30,000 dollars and increasing the allocation to the One Minneapolis Fund by 30,000 dollars. And I'll speak to that if I have a second.
Councilmember Gordon, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I think this will, this preserves project lookout funding, the motion that was made the other day to make sure to do that. I was very supportive of that motion, and I appreciated it. And this will also make whole our One Minneapolis Fund that clearly 13 council members support.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Let's have a roll call.
No.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Frye.
No.
Pal Masano.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are six ayes and seven nays.
That does not prevail. Our next person in line on the General Appropriation Resolution is Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President, and I will have the city clerk pass my resolution now. It is the immigration, I'm sorry, not the resolution, the immigration motion. Do we have copies of that that is being distributed to the council members, please? I know my staff gave it to you earlier. So I had circulated this as an informational point earlier, and what's happening is President Obama moved an executive order to allow close to 4 million undocumented immigrant people in the nation to apply for work permits and a stay of deportation. As a city, we already passed two staff directions last week, authorizing our city staff to create a work group to address these issues and work across jurisdictions and with our community partners, including philanthropy and neighborhood groups and organizations that are working for immigrant integration. So the motion here is to substantiate that work by funding it. And I will go ahead and read the motion. Hopefully, everyone has a copy of that. And that's to amend the mayor's 2015 recommended budget as amended, to reduce the appropriation in the Convention Center One-Time Marketing Enhancement by 50,000 dollars, and increase the appropriation in the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department by 50,000 dollars for support services needed to help implement President Obama's executive action on immigration.
Councilmember Frye on Councilmember Kano's amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we talk about the best allocation of money, and, you know, while I did not think the additional two communications positions were necessary, I do, in light of President Obama's recent decision, think that Councilmember Kano's allocation is good, and I will be supporting her motion.
On Councilmember Kano's amendment, Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam President, and I think I could be generally supportive, too, but it's interesting that this has not been vetted by a committee or signed off by a committee chair either, and so I would make a similar motion, as Councilmember Gordon had done in a previous action, to refer it to the Appropriate Home Committee.
Councilmember Reich has moved to refer this to the Appropriate Home Committee, which is IGR, I would think? No? What committee would people think?
Health and Community.
HEC?
Yes.
Okay. Health? You want to take it in your committee, Councilmember Gordon?
Well, I was actually included and informed about this idea, and there was a lot of discussion about it, so I would be happy to take something in my committee, if that is the will of the council. But I'm also prepared, as chair of the committee, to vote in favor of passing it now.
Councilmember Reich has moved to refer this item to the HECE Committee. Councilmember, I'm sorry, pardon me? Yes. Councilmember Kano?
Sure, thank you. So I just wanted to sort of clarify some of the background work that's been going on around this resolution. And so I engaged Councilmember Quincy, who's the chair of the Ways and Means Committee early on, as well as the chair of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, of which I am vice-chair, to really discuss this issue, and engaged finance staff extensively. Sandy Christensen and I exchanged text messages, emails, and conversations to try to figure out how to really be a regional player in this conversation as it's being rolled out throughout our nation. It's definitely an opportunity for the city of Minneapolis to step up and be a leader and a proactive contributor to this policy that has changed at the federal level. Unfortunately, because President Obama announced this executive action on November 20th, there hasn't been, I guess, enough time to move it through the committee process, per se. But I would argue that the budget process, which we are in right now, is an appropriate vehicle for us to look for support. So I would like to encourage us to go back to my original motion and consider it on the floor now, and would be happy to answer more questions about the different departments that have been involved in this conversation, including the City Coordinator's Office, the Mayor's Office, as well as Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, as well as the Intergovernmental Relations Department, all who are going to be creating a work group that works across the enterprise and engages the community on this effort. I would also like to remind you that I did forward you an email from Representative Karen Clark, who is moving a similar package at the state level to try to support the immigrant community and gaining the benefits of this new federal immigration reform action, which is the most substantive we have seen over the last 50 years, that will provide a lot of relief, a lot of support to our immigrant community members. I know in Northeast, there's a large Ecuadorian immigrant community who would welcome support from the city to respond to these efforts. Certainly, in Minneapolis, we have close to 54,000 foreign-born residents, and in Minneapolis alone, we have close to 40,000 Latino families. We know that the undocumented immigrant population is 78% of Latino descent at the national level. So I think this is really an opportune time, and I think this is a proper vehicle for us to really look at this. And I appreciate the question about how much work has gone into this. And trust me, I have not been getting a lot of sleep over the past week, trying to really make sure that we represent these community members who have been voiceless for a long time, who are continually exploited in the workplace, whose families are divided through deportation. Now, with this, the city of Minneapolis can say that we supported closing the achievement gap by making sure that families can focus on education and not deportation. So once again, I would like to encourage us to not move this to another committee and go back to the original motion, so we can show our community our support today.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have a couple comments, and then it might be a question about what actually is Councilmember Reich's motion. I will say I'm supportive of this underlying action. But this is a motion that's about the budget, and we have to take that action here today. If you defer it, there's really not appropriate vehicle for appropriating that money. It doesn't fit into our rollover policy, which, of course, wouldn't come up until March, anyway, or other vehicles. So we have to take the budget action today, and that's why I wanted to clarify if perhaps Councilmember Reich was referring to how we might get a proposal that clarifies how funds would be spent, which I do think is very appropriate. We need to, this is just the appropriation, but then there has to be work on, I mean, how actually would there be a proposal about how would you spend those funds? And so I do think that's very appropriate to refer to committee. I will say, I'm not sure the appropriate place either, just because we have already some actions that are coming through this cycle, through intergovernmental relations. And Mr. Raniere has been already actively coordinating, both with a range of city staff through the Coordinator's Department, most particularly Communications and NCR staff, and the mayor's office. And then he has also been working with stakeholders, both reaching out to the city of St. Paul to understand what they are doing, and key community foundations that are laying out a roadmap on how to respond. So I just want, again, if the motion, and maybe you want to clarify, is to ensure that this is sort of an addition, to ensure that there is a home base for clarifying before we actually send money out the door what it's for, I think that's very appropriate.
Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam President. I take the advice of good counsel to heart, and I believe that would be the appropriate intent. And so I wish that this is just maybe an internal comment to guide how we discuss the how, and then I will be supporting the underlying motion, which is the what of the money. So I guess, in essence, Madam President, I'll be withdrawing my amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Reich is withdrawing his motion. On Councilmember Kano's amendment, then, any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That amendment is adopted. Then, on the General Appropriation Resolution as amended, I have Councilmember Yang. Councilmember Yang?
Madam Chair, I'm going to remove myself.
Okay. Council, well, I'm going to remove myself. I'm next, then. I'm going to remove myself, too. Councilmember Kano?
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah, I have you in line. Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one additional motion here, and I hope I've got this divided right. This is getting passed out. I'm going to make a correction on the motion. This is about, because I was not able to make an amendment, because we were too deep on the motion as presented by Councilmembers Yang and Worsami. This would be about bringing to full funding through a different source, the Convention Center Marketing Enhancement money, the funding for homeownership support and foreclosure. And as that was already funded to 25,000 dollars, this would be a motion to reduce the appropriation to the Convention Center Marketing Enhancement by 100, not 125, and then reinstate 100 to the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development for homeownership support and foreclosure prevention. If I could just briefly speak to this.
Go ahead.
Okay. And I'm not, thank you. And I'm not going to repeat. I've already made arguments about why I think this funding, full funding of this initiative, which would include the new portion on outreach to increase homeownership in communities of color, is important. I did want to just make a comment about the Convention Center Marketing Enhancement. We are right now working with Meet Minneapolis, which is what this funding would be for, on final negotiations of their contract. I have to say, I think they are an excellent provider of services, and, but I do think that they are well compensated within their contract. I think their contract as well incorporates the kind of opportunities, enhancements, that give incentive to their sales force to do what they need to do, like bring incredible events to the city of Minneapolis, and they have a great record of success. This is about an enhancement to that funding, and this is why I think, as it compares to what we are looking to refund, I think the priority should be on ensuring support for homeownership support and foreclosure prevention. So, thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Glidden's amendment? Seeing none, just want to remind people that the Home Ownership Center has 275,000 dollars of new funding coming to them this year. They have 200,000 dollars unspent. And I want to repeat what Councilmember Goodman said, which is that we have asked a number of providers, including in our own departments, to use their existing funds before new funds are requested. And I'm going to add Grow North to the list of programs that were asked to spend their existing funding. And so, as I said, as just talking to Ms. Gugan yesterday, she has 200,000 dollars unspent. As of yesterday, we are sending 275,000 dollars, and if they need help in the middle of the year, I hope to help them. So I'd encourage my colleagues to vote no. Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We actually had a member of my office check with the representatives of the Home Ownership Center. They said that this money has been allocated already for them for this year. You can actually see them nodding their heads over there, and that they will not have funding, actually, for next year, if we do not fund this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the Glidden amendment? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
No.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Frye.
No.
Pal Masano.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are six ayes and seven nays.
That item does not prevail. Next, we go back to the General Appropriation Resolution as amended. Councilmember Pal Masano is in queue. Councilmember Pal Masano?
Yep. Madam Chair, I just passed out a motion that I'd like to bring forward. It's what you have in front of you. It says, 2015 Budget Motion by Councilmember Pal Masano. I thought about this in relation to Item Number Five in a previous motion, as to whether or not this is needed. After last week's markup, something that I did keep doing, as I kept talking, I kept talking to my colleague, Councilmember Gordon, and we've had a few conversations since that time. I think that we can do a body of work that is the kind of program evaluation that Councilmember Gordon had in his original activity. I don't think we need to appropriate more money to do this study. I've spent nearly a year rebuilding our internal audit function, and it is one that can work by ordinance, by an ordinance change, to this kind of effort. I want to just read my motion and explain the rationale for my wording. It is amending the mayor's 2015 recommended budget as amended to direct the Department of Internal Audit to work with NCR and other coordinator departments to create a scope of work, and then oversee an evaluation of NCR programs using existed budgeted resources. I also Uh, I also say staff shall report back the findings of the evaluation to the Committee of the Whole by August 2015. My rationale on the timing, and I do think it might be aggressive, is that we do need to get moving on this, and I do want it to be available, um, as the mayor makes her next year's budget. I also think that it's, you know, there's a lot that we need to do here, and I think that this will help us not put a dollar figure on it, but I would be in the future very supportive of this coming from, um, year-end savings in 2014. The reason I am not bringing this through the Audit Committee, which is an independent committee of council, is because it, this is a, a budget decision, and I, I urge your support for this. I think that we can still do, uh, this piece of work that was talked about and, and vetted through, through this budget process.
On Councilmember Palmasano's amendment, Councilmember Gordon?
Given the preceding actions that we've taken, I think this is a, a, a good, um, effort to perhaps get the evaluation done, and I appreciate it. Um, I hope that we can, uh, make sure that we can do it with those existing budgeted resources. These are all, these are kind of risky, um, motions to take here because, uh, what are we gonna find out we have and where does it have to go? But I'm committed to working, um, with Coordinator, NCR, and with Councilmember Palmasano in making sure that we can make this into a, uh, robust evaluation and have some good insightful information from it. So I, I'm gonna support this and, uh, I would welcome all of my colleagues here to support it as well.
On Councilmember Palmasano's amendment, Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, as I understand this, this is meant to be sort of a replacement for something that was in the budget, which has been cut, which it was a, what I understood to be more of a program audit of how we do community engagement as a city, which was brought forward by NCEC commissioners who came to testify at the HEC Committee, as well as neighborhood organizations who came to testify at the HEE Committee, um, which again oversees the work of our city's NCR Department, is the home committee for, um, our community engagement functions of the city. Um, so I guess I have a question, which is that is the audit department able to do a program audit? Um, or is that not the intention here? And is the intention to change, um, this to be a financial audit of neighborhood organizations and rather than an assessment of how we are doing on community engagement?
Uh, Councilmember Palmasano, would you care to respond? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Bender, um, I wanted to just leave this a little bit more open. The, there is a discrepancy between the scope of work as outlined by the Department Chair, Mr. Rubidore, which was outlined as an audit of only CPP funds, um, and our future conversations with Councilmember Gordon's office, um, and with our internal auditor, uh, where I think that it can be a little bit broader than that. Um, with there, there are, there are ample funds in our internal audit department left. I see no problem with having that. The reason I'm not putting a dollar figure on it is to allow for some appropriate scope to be determined. I think that at this point, um, $70,000, which was the original motion, is a little bit arbitrary. Um, our internal audit department has agreed that they can help to create a scope of work and then put it out for RFP. So I would anticipate that once that RFP is done, it will be shared with the Audit Committee. It will also be shared with HEE, um, which is the home committee of, of NCR, uh, and that we'll move forward from there. But it is important to me that, um, the evaluation is overseen by the Coordinator's Office in tandem with the Office of Internal Audit, which I believe was another future motion of Councilmember Bender's previously.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Palmasano's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Back to then the general appropriation resolution as amended, Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a motion that's going forward, um, which I would expect to be non-controversial. It was in last year's budget, um, and was, I think inadvertently left out this year. Um, uh, for the past, I think, three years, um, community groups, along with neighborhood organizations and other stakeholders in the city have put on Open Streets events. Um, we are a bit unique in that the city does not fund these directly, but in order to be a partner in this work and to leverage all of the funds that are coming in from, um, nonprofit sector and private sector, neighborhood organizations, we do provide in-kind, um, services through our Public Works Regulatory Services and Police Department, and it's been a really great partnership. Um, it's one of the, I think, one of the ways that our Police Department, for example, is getting out into the community and really building really great relationships. And I've had the pleasure of attending these events across the city, and I just think they're really phenomenal. So this motion is to direct staff in Public Works Regulatory Services and the Police Department to provide existing resources to facilitate up to eight Open Streets events in 2015.
Councilmember Bender's motion is in front of us. Uh, Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, um, strongly support this, uh, motion. My, my guess is that it will be, uh, supported by this, uh, council, and I just wanna thank Councilmember Bender for taking the lead on ensuring that this piece was put back in the budget. Um, I agree with her. These are just incredible events, and we've, um, been able to leverage a lot of benefit to the city from them, and, uh, they're growing. Um, it's just, uh, more and more communities want to have Open Streets events. So thank you for putting this, uh, back into the budget. I think this is a good way to do it as well.
Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I wanna speak in favor of this, um, uh, motion. Um, I, I just love Open Streets. I absolutely love it. I love it on Lowry Avenue. I would love to see it on West Broadway, um, you know? And so hopefully we will include amongst the eight, uh, West Broadway. But I mean, I'd love to see the events. I think that plenty of community members, uh, within Ward Five and Ward Four and other places, um, you know, enjoy the event quite a bit. And, you know, it, uh, shows off the great part of our city, which is North Minneapolis. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Bender's amendment at the risk of 10:30? I, I just wanna echo, uh, and Councilmember Bender, you're absolutely right. This is a place where our staff, professional staff interacts with the community in a really, uh, successful way, and, um, it's really important for that reason as well, not to mention that neighbors love it and it's a great community, um, community building event. So on the, uh, Councilmember Bender's amendment, uh, all in approval say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Back to the general appropriation resolution as amended, Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm having, uh, staff pass out a motion, uh, to amend the mayor's recommended budget by transferring $55,000 from the Convention Center Fund to that Marketing Enhancement to the City Attorney's Office for the purpose of increasing funding for restorative justice. And then I'd like to speak on that.
Councilmember Johnson's motion is in front of us.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, we held a summit a little while back on restorative justice and, uh, had city leaders and various providers and youth attend this, and, um, you know, this is a proven method, a proven solution for dealing with, uh, situations in our community where, uh, an offense has been committed and helps individuals get back on the right track. It helps divert people from our criminal justice system. Uh, it helps them make up to the community damage that was done, and it helps empower them, uh, with the skills needed to resolve their conflicts ultimately. And so, uh, this is of a police budget of over $150 million, uh, prosecution budget of over $7 million. This is a very small amount of money, but it is very, very helpful, uh, in ultimately getting especially youth who've gone, uh, off track back onto the right track. And this would leave, uh, after, uh, if this were to pass, it would leave $295,000 in the Convention Center's, uh, Marketing Enhancement Fund. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the Restorative Justice Program started in my neighborhood, in my ward downtown, and I'm a strong supporter of it. But at this late hour, it looks like the Convention Center Fund has now just become a slush fund for everyone's projects that they didn't get funded, and as a result of it, I would urge a no vote.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Johnson's amendment? Seeing none, uh, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
No.
Goodman?
No.
Frye?
No.
Palmasano?
No.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
President Johnson?
No.
There are six ayes and seven nays.
That motion fails. Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. I will be handing out a motion, and that is to amend the mayor's 2015 recommended budget as amended to reduce the appropriation to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for two FTEs in construction code services by $200,000 and increase the appropriation to the Communications Department by $174,000 for two FTEs to increase collaboration with the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department and non-English media outlets, and increase the One Minneapolis Fund by $26,000.
On Councilmember Conno's motion, uh, which is in front of you, um, uh, amending the mayor's budget to reduce the appropriation of Community Planning and Economic Development for two FTEs in construction code services and increasing the appropriation of the Communications Department, I'm sorry, construction code services by 200 and increasing the appropriation of communications by 174,000 for two FTEs and increase the One Minneapolis Fund by $26,000. Councilmember Conno, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yes. Um, so we've, we've seen, uh, an increasing, uh, padding of, of city staff, uh, this entire year, and, um, I think that it's important that we, uh, spread, uh, that investment throughout the organization in a way that really, um, elevates our capacity to reach out to, um, immigrant populations, uh, to, um, folks in our city who speak multiple languages and really help our community become the global city, uh, that it really is. Um, as many of you know, I used to work in the Minneapolis Public Schools in the Communications Department where I oversaw three staff working in multilingual communications, and that was only to represent 34,000 students. We're the City of Minneapolis, and we have no dedicated staff for multilingual communications in our Communications Department, although our city is comprised of 40% people of color. Um, so what this motion is about is really, um, balancing out, uh, the capacity of our organization to meet a growing, um, uh, city that is also growing, uh, not only in size, but also in diversity, um, and in language needs, and being able to be a more dynamic, uh, and responsive city to the needs of low-income community members who, a lot of them happen to be people of color, who also are immigrant community members that have other language needs. And so, um, our city is a bit outdated in the way that we do, uh, language communications, and I think this is gonna really get us to, um, look at a way that we can invest our resources to, uh, again, support, uh, the initiatives that diverse community members want and ask for regularly. There's probably easily here, um, anywhere from three to five, uh, council offices, uh, that I know either get requests for multilingual interpreting or translating, um, you know, uh, much, uh, and, and think about, uh, all the other departments that also get requests for this, this type of work. And, um, unfortunately, uh, the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department is an engagement office, not a communications office, and so there's a difference. Um, communications is a tool for engagement, uh, but it's not the singular engagement work that should be done. Um, so with that, I, I would like to, um, ask for support from my colleagues, uh, to move this forward.
Councilmember Goodman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Three weeks ago in the Zoning and Planning Committee, six members discussed the issue of, um, accessory dwelling units, something that Councilmember Bender had worked on, uh, for a long time, and it took a lot of us a long way to get to supporting it. Um, as a result of that, as well as a number of initiatives with regard to growth in our city, we are short five construction code services staff, people now. I would hardly call that padding of city staff. The city has seen this year over $1 billion in permits for new construction. Construction code services isn't, isn't a voluntary thing. You don't get to build a building without having an inspector come and inspect it. You don't get to put in plumbing, you don't get to put in electric, you can't even get through any of the building trades inspections without having someone from construction code services sign off on the contract. So the bottom line is, we have to have these people doing this work because for five years we've had almost, almost a billion dollars in construction going on in the city. And for a group of people that cares so much about growth and development, not having the people available to inspect the building that's happening would simply stop construction as we know it. Um, so I just see this as a way, uh, simply to not acknowledge the growth in density that we're talking about and/or to try to slow it down.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. After this discussion came forward, particularly because the, the issue of accessory dwelling units has come up so much in this discussion, I had the opportunity to reach out to the staff that manages our building inspectors. Uh, zoning planning is also the home committee for that staff, um, and I learned a lot about our building inspectors. Um, so this is, so all of our departments have a way to add staff as needed, um, throughout, through the budget process in coordination with finance, um, throughout the year. And so our budget is really about our commitment to ongoing funding and ongoing FTEs. Um, so that's an important distinction, I think. Um, in terms of our building inspectors, um, certainly it is not, uh, optional to have building inspectors, but it is optional to have one full-time building inspector that is dedicated to on-call service in the 13th Ward to police teardowns. And we do have one full-time FTE that is going above and beyond inspecting, uh, our regular cycle of, uh, inspections in the 13th Ward. We also have three FTEs in building inspections that are completely dedicated to the Viking Stadium, which is necessary. It is important to keep that safe, that construction site inspected and safe, but that is a temporary situation, and I don't think it needs to be reflected in our ongoing funds. So I'll be supporting this amendment. I also think it is, um, curious to, uh, suggest that we have currently one accessory dwelling unit in the entire city. Um, other cities that have legalized accessory dwelling units have not seen a, a huge number. So if we need a full-time building inspector to inspect three accessory dwelling units, um, I think I need to learn more about how our building inspectors are spending their time.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in our report from the budget, we did direct, uh, finance to facilitate the hiring of five new FTE positions, you know, taking, or hiring three in construction code services, I think, is pretty sufficient, especially when the two positions within communications are for cross-department collaboration. And so if construction code services is empowered by those two positions to better communicate with residents doing construction, doing rebuilds, doing teardowns and new builds, then maybe we could get by quite easily with three new folks in construction code services and wouldn't need the full five. Plus, of course, all of the, uh, equity value with having, um, multilingual and, uh, translation services, uh, available as well, uh, is a positive, positive move for our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just need to say I'm not supporting this motion, um, because we wanna build things in the city, and to do that, I do believe we need more inspectors. We have 10.6-plus million dollars in affordable housing that we just approved. I expect that we're going to spend it, and I want to get us to the point of spending it. We need good and responsible growth in our city. I think we see in other places in other countries where there aren't as, uh, robust building codes and, uh, ordinances to guide our building. This has been a huge focus of my entire year, and because of the activity going on right now in the 13th Ward, that is why we have inspectors in the 13th Ward. I am grateful that our mayor's approach to this budget process, when she has, um, made decisions about ongoing staff, has been about ongoing funds, not one-time funds. That was one of the, um, important critical conversions that we got in the Department, um, CPED budget, where it, it took one, one-time fund for a building inspector and made it ongoing. Um, that was important to me. It's important to me that we invest in these inspectors. Um, there are so many ways that inspectors get approached. They get put in pretty tight situations, you know, the, the kinds of calls that come from our office are urgent, they've called police, um, it's about a major infill project going on right next to their home. Um, but I don't expect any different service than anywhere else in the city, and there is a big project being built downtown, and there are tons of things being built in Councilmember Frye's Ward, and I, I just think that we need all of the, uh, depth, the bench strength that we can possibly get in CPED right now. Um, the, the people that currently work in these positions, um, I, I believe are taxed. I believe that they are, um, they're struggling to keep up, and I think that this is one way we can invest, not in the current activity, but also in the future growth of our city. So I, I don't support this motion in trying to shift this in one-time funds. Thanks.
Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate, uh, Councilmember Palmasano's, um, um, words on how these, um, inspectors are being used throughout the city and particularly, particularly in her ward. Um, and I say that because, um, I remember that there was, um, something that the council member had shared about people, um, in her ward having to pay something like $60,000
shared about people in her ward having to pay something like $60,000 in property taxes, which I believe could be a $3-million lakefront home in some of the wealthiest areas of our city. And the people that would benefit by this multilingual position would never be able to see a $3-million home unless they were cleaning it. So, to invest $174,000 in two city staff positions that will be helping the neediest, most underprivileged community members in our city is really very little to ask of other parts of our city where the economy is booming, people are building new homes, where families will never have to share one room and put four people sleeping in there. This is really about an issue of equity and wealth, and sharing the pie, and sharing the resources that our city has. I also want to acknowledge that this budget proposal was put together not by a new mayor, but by a mayor who used to chair the Ways and Means Committee, and who also represented your area long ago, well, about a year ago. And I would like to think that there's some level of expertise there.
Councilmember Conno, please direct your comments through the chair, not directly to Councilmember Palmisano. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm a freshman council member in learning. So with that, I would like to ask my colleagues to please consider investing in these two positions, which were originally outlined in the mayor's budget, to help us reach our equity goals, to help us bring the city of Minneapolis into the 21st century when it comes to communicating with the diverse residents of our city. It has taken us a long time to have this discussion. Community members are, as you can tell, more than ready for the city to take action on this. It's really been clear throughout the past weeks what the national context is for this dialogue, and how we should be leading in the nation to close these equity gaps and to invest in these communities, and not be the city of the past that continues to be divided by old inequities, but really lead with our foot forward and face these challenges head-on. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Conno's motion?
I'm going to just speak briefly and ask my colleagues not to support this. I want to point out that these inspectors, in my community, among the poorest in this city, these inspectors find unpermitted work. That's the problem we have in North Minneapolis, unpermitted work. People do work all the time without taking out permits. And so, it isn't just 13th Ward that benefits from this. And I will tell you, having looked at this idea, this problem of not having enough inspectors to do the work because we have this growth in our city, one of the things in doing the investigation, we have had an increase in permit fees every year for the last, like, three years of at least $3 million a year. So, these things pay for themselves. When the inspector goes out and does the work, gets the permit fee, it covers the cost of that inspector. So this is, this is a whole different thing. Even though those dollars go in the general fund, they're supported by fees that builders pay. And when we catch somebody doing unpermitted work, we double fee them. So, that goes in the general fund as well. So I encourage my colleagues to vote against this. Clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
No.
Worsami?
No.
Goodman?
No.
Fry?
No.
Palmisano?
No.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
President Johnson?
No.
There are five ayes and eight nays.
That motion does not pass. Councilmember Goodman, you're next in line.
Thank you, Madam President. I call the question on the main motion.
Councilmember Goodman has called the question on the main motion. Any discussion on that, Mayor?
I know that you can't have discussion on a called question, but I appreciate a moment to say I would like to speak on the main motion at some point.
Okay.
I defer to the mayor.
Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Goodman would like to have you speak.
So, thank you. It's been a while since I've been here this late on a budget night. Things back old times when we actually had to make big cuts because of what was going on at the state. And I share the disappointment of so many people in the room, and the six council members who agreed about the cuts that were proposed and the restorations that weren't made. And I do think that that was shortsighted, that it was not a full restoration. That homeownership fund, for example, will have $100,000 fewer dollars. Cutting the two FTEs in the Communications Department doubles down on the future levy shortfall. It's going to be more expensive to fix that later, even more expensive than the cut that had already been made. And it also flies in the face of all our claims regarding access and transparency, and our desire to make our city more open and available to the people of our community. But, you know, the folks in the room, you all made a difference, a big one. Not as much as you wanted, or as I wanted, on this evening, but it mattered that you made your voices heard. It mattered that you talked to people. It mattered that you said what was important to you about those changes that were made, and what was important to you, and what needed changing back. And those dollars would not be in this budget if you all had not done that, and I appreciate it very much. And it's going to be important that voices keep being heard as we move forward, if we're trying to get this agenda done. It's going to be important that the community works together to make sure that we can keep moving forward on a strong equity agenda and making Minneapolis a place that works for everybody, every single person in it. That said, that said, the question has been called on a budget that has a lot of really great things in it that we care about. There's youth violence prevention work, there's outreach workers for young people downtown, a program that has proven to be working to get young people out of the way of harm. There's education for parents of adolescents to intervene in those moments that are toughest in some parents' lives. There's money for minority entrepreneurs to give them technical assistance. There's money for the Upper Harbor Terminal, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to invest on the North Riverfront in North Minneapolis. There's public safety investments that are a lot about community policing, community service officer classes, body cams. Body cams are in this budget. There are 911 operators, there are fire recruit classes, there is an explorers program which is designed to bring more people from the community, the entire community, into our fire department. There are animal care and control officers. There are more animal care and control officers in this budget on which the question has been called. And there are infrastructure investments. Nicollet Mall, Nicollet Mall, fundamental to the growth of the future, for the future of our city, our piece of that is in this budget. Protected bike lanes are in this budget. Again, an important piece of our infrastructure, but also an important piece of the growth and appeal of our city to bring people here. We're going to be more effective in our transit and transportation planning. There's a new division in public works. Pedestrian safety initiatives remained in this budget, in part thanks to the work of folks here. Corner clearing. It's going to be more accessible in the winter for folks here in the city of Minneapolis, because we're going to be able to clear snow from the corners more frequently. And yes, there's organics recycling in this budget. There's organics recycling in this budget. There is a lot to celebrate here. There's a lot to celebrate here. One of the things to celebrate is the impact your voices had on making sure that we have more money than we would have had for One Minneapolis Fund, and that we have a few more dollars for the homeownership fund than we would have had, and that our community energy partnership will carry forward. But in addition to that, everything I just listed and more is in this budget, and there's a lot to celebrate. And I am eager to move forward on the vision that is embodied in this document.
Councilmember Goodman has called the question. All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The chair rules that the motion prevails. On the general appropriation resolution as amended, Councilmember Gordon?
I would request a voice vote. I think it's a two-thirds that's needed for a call.
It is. You want a roll call, you mean?
Yes.
Okay. A roll call on the council, on the calling the question. Clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Bender?
No.
Glidden?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
No.
Conno?
No.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are eight ayes and five nays.
That motion does not prevail. Anyone else care to speak? Councilmember Gordon?
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody allowing at least a chance to speak on the big sense of the budget. I just didn't want to call the question because I think we were so wrapped up in individual motions along the way that we really haven't had an opportunity to perhaps explain our final votes, and I would like that opportunity. So I appreciate that, and I encourage others to do that if they'd like to, now that we have that, and I'll try to be brief. I recognize there's a lot of good things in this budget and things that I really appreciate about it. I'm really glad, for a lot of the things that the mayor mentioned are in here, I think it's really a strong budget. It's, I'm really glad that we saved the equity positions in the coordinator's office. I'm delighted that we have money for protected bikeways. The Clean Energy Partnership now will be fully funded, and I think that's significant, and it's major. We have body cameras that are in here. We've saved most of the money for One Minneapolis. I appreciate that. But I'm also not going to be supporting the overall budget, and not because of the proposal that we got for the mayor, not because of those initiatives got passed, but I just think that the way we got there and the cuts are too deep and they're too significant. And I don't think we got ourselves to a consensus, and I don't want to pretend that I'm at the consensus with all of you with where it stands now. We're going to be scrambling now to get some money for evaluation. We're not going to have the support for the home buyers and the homeownership there, even though it was not that big of a stretch and a big of a reach, I don't think, for us to get there, and it wouldn't have hurt any of the other priorities. So I really don't understand that. It almost feels like it was more of a power struggle going on here than an effort to cooperate with one another to make this a better city for everybody. And I want to vote for a budget that I think we got to because we all wanted to cooperate with one another, listen to one another, and share with one another so that we could work together for a better city. And I might not be with you this time, but I hopefully be with you next time on the next budget, and let's think carefully about that. I'm also very concerned about what reducing the levy this year and the resources we're going to have this year are going to do for us next year. And if we had all of this about this now, I don't know if we're going to be ready to face the economic future that's coming our way, and I just think that's a little bit irresponsible even, and I'm not sure that I want to sign off on it at this point. I'm expecting it to pass, and I'm expecting to work on the initiatives in it and to work with all of you, but it's not going to have my vote tonight.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I actually wasn't going to speak, but because of Councilmember Gordon's speech, I feel like I want to be able to explain my vote because I'm approaching this in a little bit different way than Councilmember Gordon, even though I think we share some sentiments. I will agree with him that I am concerned about divides that were shown on a very close vote here on some of the elements that you ended up hearing a lot of conversation about. And clearly, people had disagreements, and they voiced those disagreements. And I will say, though, even though it's not always with this much engagement by the public, it's not always on this close of a vote, these disagreements happen almost every single budget. And at the end of the day, we each have to kind of explore our conscience on what do we feel about the budget as a whole. And I know the mayor just gave a long, long speech about things in the budget, and Councilmember Gordon did as well, and I guess when I look at this budget as a whole, there are things that I think that are important in this budget. And because of that, I do not want to be in the position of voting against this budget. The mayor talked about body cameras. I think another thing is that there is really some unprecedented changes that are happening in our public works department in how we value pedestrian and bicycle accessibility in our city. The Clean Energy Partnership is one small piece of this, but to me, a very, very critical piece, and I could go on. So, I am not happy with all the decisions that have been made in this budget, but as a whole, I think there are important things in this budget, and I'm going to vote to support this budget. And I thank you all very, very much for being here. I'll note that it is three minutes before 11 o'clock, and we still have a full chamber that is here. So I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any further discussion on the 2015 general appropriation resolution as amended? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
No.
Conno?
I suppose you can't say maybe, so I'll say aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and one nay.
That motion is adopted. Next, we have the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. Councilmember Quincy, will you present that report?
I will. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move adoption of a resolution adopting the city's four-year capital improvement program covering fiscal years 2015 to 2019 with no amendments.
Councilmember Quincy moves the capital program as brought forward through the Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee. Any discussion on that item? It's the capital program, so we need nine votes for that program to be approved. Seeing no questions or amendments, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the consideration of a resolution related to the issuance of 2015 capital improvement bonds to fund various projects included in the capital improvement program. Councilmember Quincy?
Madam President, the budget subcommittee is forwarding four resolutions for adoption, which authorize the issuance of city bonds in various amounts to finance projects included in the city's 2015 capital improvement program. I move approval of all four resolutions.
Councilmember Quincy has moved to authorize the issuance of city bonds for various projects in the 2015 capital program. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the final agenda item, which relates to utility rates for the city to be effective January 1, 2015. Councilmember Quincy, would you present the committee's report?
Thank you, Madam President. I will. I move adoption of a resolution setting rates municipal utility services, including water, sewer, solid waste, recycling, all of which become effective January 1, 2015. Move that report.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the resolution setting rates for the water, sewer, municipal utility services, water, sewer, solid waste, and recycling for 2015. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the consideration of a resolution related to the issuance of 2015 capital improvement bonds to fund various projects included in the capital improvement program. Councilmember Quincy?
Madam President, the budget subcommittee is forwarding four resolutions for adoption, which authorize the issuance of city bonds in various amounts to finance projects included in the city's 2015 capital improvement program. I move approval of all four resolutions.
Councilmember Quincy has moved to authorize the issuance of city bonds for various projects in the 2015 capital program. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the consideration of a resolution related to the issuance of 2015 capital improvement bonds to fund various projects included in the capital improvement program. Councilmember Quincy?
Madam President, the budget subcommittee is forwarding four resolutions for adoption, which authorize the issuance of city bonds in various amounts to finance projects included in the city's 2015 capital improvement program. I move approval of all four resolutions.
Councilmember Quincy has moved to authorize the issuance of city bonds for various projects in the 2015 capital program. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, call